The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
Prime Wellness Center has granted a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lock Drive. A little history, it came to us and was given regular course on March 12th, 2018, amended to change the address to 1771 Lock Drive on 3/26/49, 2018. The hearing was continued to 5/14/2018, was given further time from April 2nd, 2018, May 14th, 2018, June 11th, 2018, November 26th, 2018. The hearing was continued to June 11th, 2018, tabled with the hearing continued to June 11th, 2018. We removed it from the table on September 24th, 2018. Public hearing continued October 22nd, 2018 at 6:30, December 10th, 2018 at 6 o'clock, which is now, I'm the clerk of legal affairs, Councilor Dombrowski has a conflict and Councilor Bedanza is the other member of the committee. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? The last time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? The second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? The third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, I'll go to Councilor Bedanza first, if he has any comments or questions.
I do not.
Are there any other members of the council that have any questions or comments? Okay, at the request, I want to stress that it's at the request of summit construction. And I will read the letter, it was sent Thursday, December 6th. I apologize, December 6th, summit construction to John Dombrowski and to Ward 5, Rick Marshan. Subject 1771 Lock Drive. We hereby request leave to withdraw without prejudice, the application of the cultivation license of 1771 Lock Drive, which is scheduled for Monday, December 10th, 2018. Thank you for your cooperation. James Exaris Summit Management, 507 Lancaster Street, Suite 101, Leominster, Mass. And I'm assuming he is asking for leave to withdraw for representing Prime Wellness. So with that, if there's no objection, we'll close the hearing.
No objection here.
Okay. Hearing is closed, Mr. President.
Thank you. This is a citation going around, if everyone could sign it, please.
Dombrowski is the chair of, and Finance Committee, which I am the chair of. C-22 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the mayor to borrow $810,000 for the purpose of funding the foregoing acquisition and costs incidental or related thereto, in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of project costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. The legislative history on this communication was, it was introduced on October 22nd, 2018, given regular course. A public hearing was established on November 13th, 2018. The public hearing was given further, the communication was given further time, and the public hearing was continued to tonight, 12/10/2018, at 6:05 PM. Would you like to join us, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What is the street address of this property? I forget.
1183 Pleasant Street.
So just for the public, so the public understands, money was proposed to be authorized relative to the purchase of, I'm sorry, once again?
1183 Pleasant Street.
1183 Pleasant Street, which is a private home that butts Sholen Farms, the city-owned orchard. Mr. Mayor, would you like to be heard first?
Yes, let me just start, I don't know sort of if I made my point clear last time, the last time we were talking down here about this issue. First of all, the city is under no obligation at all to purchase the property, and it's not a property that's being offered to the city under 61A, or B, or C, right on. So just so everyone understands the policy, we began to have people come, contact our office and ask whether or not the city was interested in certain pieces of land. Some are very small pieces of land that, you know, they've been paying taxes on, and they're basically landlocked, and there's really no reason for them. So those, we really aren't, I think under the law, we can go ahead and sell those, or auction them, or whatever, that's not an issue. So what we decided is so that everyone would understand, because there might be a piece of property that someone sees a benefit for, and maybe not. So when we've, when these people have contacted us, we said, you know, our policy is to go to the city council, we started that a while ago, if you remember, the last one was the one on Central Street. So that's why I think the public needs to understand, so that this is sort of open and transparent. We're not banging on people's doors at this point to buy people's properties. This is just a policy the city has, so if somebody comes in, we can bring it down, and the public has a right to come in and speak far against it, and that's a good idea or not, or it's too much money, or it's really no use, and the city needs to do other things, that's all fine and well. So I don't want anybody to think this is some sort of an adversarial process, it's not. It's really meant to be open, so that everyone can sort of weigh in on it. Mr. Bernard had indicated some time ago that he might be interested someday in selling his property, and as a butters, asked if we'd be interested at all, and I said, well, when you get ready, if you don't mind, there's nothing in writing, but if you would allow us sort of the right of first refusal, as is the case in 61A, when the city gets a bona fide offer under that, because the people keep it under, protect it under open space, they can then, and that's the benefit, and the benefit to the city is, so they got, they pay less of a tax. So if you look around at different farms in the city or open space, you'll find it's under one of the 61, under the provisions, which means they don't pay the full taxes of value, they pay less. In exchange, if they sell that property, it comes out of 61, then the property has to be offered to us, and it has to be a bona fide offer. So you can't go find a relative and say, hey, can you write up an offer? Come in and say, yeah, the property's worth 5 million when it's worth 500,000. Doesn't work that way. So all we did is, because there's no law requiring Mr. Bernard to come in and offer it to us, it's just a friendly, are you interested in the property? We came down here, explained it to you, you said, you know, would you like us to get an appraisal? The answer was yes, we got an appraisal, and Mr. Bernard had stated, we had back and forth a little bit on what the, what sort of was, in the old days, sort of the history of it all is, that at one time, whoever owned the farm, these are sort of back, way back, and not anything that would hold up today, that whoever owned the farm would have to agree if any of those lots were built on. But we later found out through legal research that that wouldn't hold up. So anyway, Mr. Bernard is offering the city the land and house, and has a price on it, just as he has it listed right now with, I think, Foster Healy, and it's up to us collectively as the members of the city here, of the leaders, to decide whether or not we want to buy it. This isn't the last piece, and I want to make sure I'm clear on that, there are other pieces of land that people have expressed interest to us and said, my property's available, would you like to buy it? I'm going to do the same thing. We're going to come right back down here, we'll tell you where the property is, if it looks like something you're interested in, then we'll move to the appraisal piece, we'll try to negotiate the best price we can, and in the end, unless it's a 61A property, it'll be, you know, a price that's listed, a price that the owner's looking for. So tonight, before you is Sholen Farms. The other piece I didn't want to sort of confuse everyone with is, is it cheaper to build, I think one of the questions was, and legitimately, is it cheaper to build a new facility than it is to, you know, renovate or make improvements to this building? But we're really not proposing either or, we're just proposing purchase of the property and the land. So I think I explained in a letter that we had sent back, both Bill and I had sent back to the council some ideas on, you know, would you do the billing, who would coordinate it? Yes, we'd put a committee together, but I think overall, Leominster has never passed the Community Preservation Act, and I think last time I said, spend a little time, and encourage you to spend a little time, and see what other communities have done with their Community Preservation Act. So the money that goes into the registry of deals, the registry of deals from property sold in Leominster goes into a pool, on a certain percentage of the tax, on the fees when you transfer a property, that goes into a pool. The only way you can get that money is to pass the Community Preservation Act, which is, I believe, to increase taxes by 1% to 3%, and has to be dedicated to, there's a whole laundry list of things. We've never done that, because it means an increase in taxes, my bone of contention has been, what do you care where we get our match? It shouldn't matter to you. Well, most communities can't, don't have the match, so they have to raise taxes to do it, so we're a little bit penalized. We don't have that ability, but there are, I brought several examples tonight, if anybody wants to look at them, of what other communities have done, they're pretty similar projects. So what would we do? I think the vision, there is a long-term plan, which Sholen Farms identifies the property in their long-term plan. I think what I would look at, just my vision for this, my vision is just my own personal, is that the city should acquire all that property up in that area, anything that's left up there. One good reason, and set the price aside right now of owning this property, is all of the land, and I think Joanne's behind me can sort of speak for herself, but every time we try to do something up there, remember, we receive grants, and we sign certain documents that limited us to what we could do there. And many times the state steps in and says, you can't do this, or you can't do that, you can't do this. This would be the first time we've owned a piece of property near Sholen, where we can actually do sorts of things that we need, and would fit into the overall long-term plan of Sholen Farms. But my vision for Sholen Farms and all around it is really much more than it is, and I think that's the vision of the committee itself. They move slowly, and they move thoroughly, but they move conservatively. And Sholen Farms has never come to us, we've never bonded anything up there, they're self-sustaining, they've done a great job. But the vision up there is really sort of a number of different things. I think people have, I hate to say this, but for people that golf, just people aren't golfing anymore, or younger people aren't, they're not, they don't have a half a day or a day to give up the golf, but it's more outdoors, it's more experience, it's more adventure. Sholen Farms is a perfect opportunity, it's a day in the country. For a lot of people that live outside of this area, they come here for that day in the country. They come here for peace and solitude, every day I go up there, every night, there are people that just sit on the front row and just sit there and read, or they listen to music, or they just sort of look into the, you know, the beautiful view and appreciate it in the way that I think all of us have. But there are so many different uses, it's more than just apples, and I think it was said, well, you don't make any money using apples. Well, in business, there are a lot of lost leaders, you don't make a fortune with apples, but it is an apple orchard, and it is what brings people in. But while they're there, they appreciate the land that's there, they appreciate the open space, it's quiet, for so many other reasons. But I think long-term, our trail system is marked now, which is very helpful, people weren't sure what property they belonged on in the past, they didn't know if they belonged in parcel A or B, or went over the hill and took a right, whether or not that was property they could walk on. Remember, we have an easement, I think we purchased the easement, or rights to some of the powers property, but if I go down there, I'm really not sure exactly where I'm supposed to be down there, but the trails are all marked. More and more people are using it, more and more people are using it for outdoor activities, for health benefits, for recreation, and so the long-term vision is, and it's, the business continues to grow, is aggregations, where actually, you might not think of it, but people go on vacation to work on farms. Our ability to attract students from agricultural schools across not only the state but the country to come here and work. So there's only so much you can do with an old historic building, we're not going to have weddings inside, or the firefighter's ball, or we're not going to have big events in it. So what can you do with them? Normally, they become things like office space, Sholen has no office space at all at this particular point. And that's pretty much, meeting space, there is no meeting space up there, they meet in that garage that they have up there, and it's nice, but it gets cold. So I know that we can use the space, I'm not worried about that. It does have, it has some benefits, and I think you know those benefits, there are some good, things that are really good with the property, it's an older property, who would maintain it? I think I indicated in my letter, it's a great project with CTEI. We've had a difficult time finding somebody with a piece of land who might be interested in having us build them a house, like we did in the past. Perfect restoration project for them, similar to the Drake House, I think the Drake House, the next step is, working with the CTEI to have them look at what we can remove from there, and begin to start with the restoration of that. But it's an old building, it's a historic building, it's in a beautiful section of the city, and we have one chance at it, tonight's our chance. Again, this isn't meant to be adversarial or put anybody in a difficult spot, but again, this is just one of the many properties that will be coming to the city council in terms of people that are interested in selling them. Some of them are 61A, and you're going to get, we're going to get a letter from them, from their attorney usually, saying that we have, I don't know, how many days is it?
21, I think.
Is it 60? You have so many days after, it's a short period to decide whether or not we want to buy the property or not. So you have, you know, by statutes, a very rigid, quick process that is accelerating for the benefit of the, you know, if the city's really interested, then we're going to have to take action on. But I can think of three that I know of, and then there are other parcels in the city that people are interested in. So I hope that answers that question. On the price, the price is what's listed, maybe the owner changes his or her mind and comes back, I'm not sure. I know that the state senator said that he would advocate and push for funding for that, for the purchase of the property, so there are a bunch of moving parts that are out there, and I think that's pretty much an update. I don't know if you have any questions for me or Bill, Bill worked on the appraisal part, and again, has worked with Mr. Bernard in coming up with the price. So it wasn't our price, it was, it was Mr. Bernard's offer to the city to sell the property at that amount.
Before I open it up to the public, does anybody have a question, Mr. Mayor? Disjuncture. Councilor Frida?
Not really a question, it's, and I'm going to speak totally from a professional point of view, because that's my occupation. I have an issue with the price being set on four potential building lots. Right now, that house, wherever you look, and I think Mr. Mitchell will agree, it's a house on four acres of land. I mean, even in the appraisal, there's a sketch of four lots, but they're not stamped, they're not engineered, so there's a question as to whether they're buildable. The listing that I did pull out, it's Lamachia Real Estate, by the way, Mayor.
I gave free advertisement for Foster Healy. I take that back, I would draw that.
Well, Rick Healy, we can let Rick have the advertising. But it's, it clearly says potential for four lots. Plus the fact that you have a septic system that is presumed to be failed, and it's also in the listing that says it's the buyer's responsibility to replace that septic system. You have no idea how much that would cost. We know that, talking 50,000 up, 40,000, 50,000, depending on what you find when you go to put it in. The antique value of the property, and from all, for all intents and purposes, it's a beautiful property, but if you're going to retrofit it with ADA capabilities, now you're changing the character of that building. So now you've got, you've got two, two issues that are against each other. I support purchasing this property, but not for a price of $800,000. I mean, I think it's got to be realistic, the original, the original assessment, and I agree with, with Bill, the original assessment for taxes is $390,000. And it got to $600,000, then it went to $800,000. The appraisal says 710 on the analysis, and then moved up. So it went to 810 to us, and it's on the market for 850. So it's all over the map as far as numbers go. I just, as an appraiser, and as someone who does the business, that number does not make sense to me. And I support the purchase at the right price, but I just, you can't put a value of $800,000 on four prospective lots. Right now, it's a house with four acres on it, and that's the way I think it's got to be looked at, unless you come in with a stamped engineered plan that says you can build on it. You've got to put a well, you've got to put a septic system on every one of those lots, you've got 100 feet that you have to have between the septic system and the well, which could present a problem, you don't know what the soil is. I mean, we don't know that they're buildable, and if we pay that and they can't build on them, I think it's a disservice to the taxpayer to do that. So that's just my, and it's all professional, I mean, I did a lot of research and thinking about it.
That's why we brought it down here, for the exact reason. So, one of the things that can happen, sort of next step, is you can table this tonight, I don't think the city council needs to vote on this specifically tonight, right? You're under no obligation to vote on this tonight. You can table it, right? And so some of the things that can happen is, you could have another appraisal done, and look, or get the appraiser back and say, we want you to look sort of further into this, and drill down a little deeper, if I'm intended, but look at some of these areas and take another look at value. Or we could just go back, Bill and myself, and try to negotiate a different price. Again, the owner's free to do whatever, people have listed things in Leominster I thought would never sell, and then in the real estate transfers, I see how much, they sold it for, and I'm still trying to figure it out.
Well, I don't disagree, but if you, if this, at $850,000, if somebody went and offered that, they're not going to go to the bank and get a loan on it. You know, with a failed septic system and potential for building lots. At $800,000 is based on the fact that you have four lots you can build on, and without having those stamped and engineered and saying you can build on them, there's no bank that's going to give you a loan on that.
Yeah, like I said, I'm the messenger, this is, you know, we negotiate.
I'm just stating my professional opinion.
Sure, no, no, totally understood.
Thank you, Councilor Frida.
Good observation.
Unless there's any objection, I'd like to open it up to the public at this point. Any member of the public who would like to speak in favor of C-22, please come forward. I'll ask again, any member of the public wishing to speak in favor of C-22? We all know who you are, but please identify yourself for the public.
I don't think I know everybody here. My name is Joanne Donato, I live at 18 May Street in Leominster. Good evening, Mayor, and city councilors and fellow citizens. I'm speaking to you as a citizen, president of the Friends of Sholen Farms, and first female president of the Mass Fruit Growers Association. I want to thank you, thank you. Well, it's not just me, it's Sholen Farms that put me there, too. Thank you for saving Sholen Farms. As I recall, during the original purchase, the community was split 50/50. There were many contentious arguments back then, and I was, I was there. Now, 18 years later, if we took a vote, I suspect that most of the community would say, we did the right thing, we saved it. The Friends have shouldered the hard work and the expense to restore the orchard. We've built a reputable agritourism business from the ground up, which is not easy, and I'm sure the Gophers could speak to that as well. Farming is one of the most difficult things that we can do. We're not here to talk about Sholen Farms, our business, because the mayor has already talked about that, I just want you to know how hard we've worked. We're here to talk about the preservation of an iconic farmstead located at 1183 Pleasant Street. I have had the opportunity to go visit it, and I thank the Barnards for making the offer to the city. I'm all for preserving it, once it's gone, we can't bring it back, and that was the argument for Sholen Farms, once it's gone, it can't come back. The property, in my opinion, and as we work at Sholen Farms, is unencumbered by the restrictions that the state has put on us with APR, which is the agricultural preservation restriction, and the conservation restrictions. We are so tied with our hands behind our back, we can't do a lot of things up there. Even the Envirothon, which is coming again this year, we have to get a permit from the state. So, and we also have the Mass Fruit Growers coming in July, so I'm pretty excited about that. I have the respect, we have gained the respect of all the fruit growers in Massachusetts, that's why I'm now president. They like what we've done, they struggle with the same things that we struggle with. This property has endless possibilities, because it's not encumbered by those. The city must determine the uses and identify the funding for the ongoing maintenance of such a property. We all know that it could, it could be burdensome to the city, we know how much it's cost us to keep Sholen Farms afloat. So as I stated before, there has to be a defined use, and there has to be a plan going forward. You can't just save a property and not have it funded, and not have a real clear decision as to how it's going to be used and how it's going to be maintained. Over the weekend, I had customers come to buy Christmas trees. I always ask how they heard about Sholen Farms, their answer is, I walk my dog there, I hike here, I have a garden here, I picked my first apple here. I even had a wish to firefighter come by on Saturday. I had customers from Holden, Clinton, Fitchburg, and maybe a couple from Leominster. But they all take such pride, even our volunteers, and even the citizens of Leominster now take such pride in it, and they all, when we had the first article about this property being saved, many, many people showed up and said, save it, because once it's gone, we can't keep it. In closing though, I understand both points of view. I understand saving it, and I understand it's too much money, and there's a big burden to the city. So I understand both, but I really want to say is, thank you very much for entertaining this decision, thank you for your hard work as councilors, because I know it's not an easy job, really appreciate it, and good luck with the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C-22?
Good evening, I'm Jody Murray, 275 Mechanic Street. I have been on the Board of Directors for Sholen Farms, and it was one of my thought processes early on, that the properties that were surrounding Sholen Farms become part of Sholen Farms again. Steve's, especially because of the way the farm wraps around three sides of it. It is completely encompassed by Sholons. I know it's a large expense, I know there's a lot of work to be done. Do I think the city is up to the task of handling it? Absolutely. You've seen what the orchard has done for this city, put it on the map, been a destination. You've seen what the orchard has done for this city, put it on the map, been a destination. Thousands of people have enjoyed that facility. And it's not gone unnoticed everywhere. My business, they know I used to work and be part of Scholand's Board of Directors. It's amazing how many people come in and ask me how the farm is doing, thirteen miles away. I do think that, once it's gone, well, I know, once it's gone, it's gone, it'll never come back. No one will ever be able to afford to bring it back. This is the threshold you're setting on right now. There are so many things that that piece of property could do to be instrumental in the forward progression of Scholand Farms and the city of Lummester. If it's not voted on favorably, I, I think the city's missing the boat. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any other member of the public like to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two?
John Souza, three forty-seven Prospect Street, on the Board of Directors of Scholand Farms, and also Chairman of the Planning Board. Years ago, when we first looked at Scholand Farms and being on the planning board, we approved that for a hundred and sixty-eight houses, I believe it was. It was one of the best plans that ever came before us. They were always thirty-two feet wide on the streets, they had sidewalks and trees, and they were going to give the city money for firefighting and help the schools, and if you could think of any of the playgrounds, it was, it was probably the most perfect plan that I ever saw, that ever came to this board. And, you know, with that, it put a value on the property, and we met that, that value and bought it. The question is, everybody says, now what do we do with it? Well, we're here back eighteen years later, we've got a piece of property, and we said, now what do we do with it? Okay, so, things come around. But at the same time, I can wear both hats and look at a planner. And I look at that property and, yeah, if I was to draw a piece of line, a line on the paper, I can come up with four hypothetical lots. But I have to develop it. I have to put in sewage, I got to put in septic, and we got to put in water. You know, the wells have to, they had to drive a new well for the current house, so they, so all of those cost money. So they're not hundred thousand dollar lots, they're fifty thousand dollar lots, with fifty, sixty, or seventy thousand dollars of development to make it a buildable lot. So I look at the assessments, and I'm saying, I got some questions, but it's there, I'm not a professional in that area, I'm a planner. Could it be built? Yeah. Yes. But should it be built? I don't believe so. Because it's so tied into Scholand. Could we use it? Yes. Could it become offices for us? Yes. Could it be offices for some other departments, or the schools, or the University of Massachusetts to come over and, and set up a program? Yes. And there are other potentials. So we look at it and say, on one hand, I say, yeah, the assessment, I don't think is quite right, but on the other hand, I say, I've got a project here that I can't replace, it's in the perfect location, and when we talk of something, and we talk about real estate, it's location, 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 well, that has it. So, I urge you to take a hard look at it. Sometimes we have to, you know, bite the bullet to get to the end thing, and I think this might be one of the cases, where we might have to bite the bullet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two?
My name is Dorothy Rollo, I live at fifty-four Low Street. And I want to say that Scholand Farms, some of the things that you have at Scholand Farms, view, solitude, pride of Lummester, and history. One of the histories is that the house was built about the same time as Johnny Appleseed was born. And so you have something that, I know we have a lot of other orchards around the area, but I don't think we have one, I don't think they have one that's so magnificent with regard to Johnny Appleseed, with regard to our Scholand Farm, Apple Farm. I remember, and you may remember, that there is a property on Lummester on Pleasant Street that we battled back in two thousand and four to try and save and make it a residential A, but it wasn't, and we lost it. And consequently, we have a wrongful construction in a single-family neighborhood that is also very historic for the beginning of the manufacturing, plastic manufacturing plant in Lummester. The Lincoln House, if you remember, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Badanza, on the tour. Mr. Mayor, you spoke about a bank of windows that was remarkable on the side of the house, and under someone else's construction, that bank of windows was the first thing that went. And, and, windows in a house, in a historic house, are so important. This could happen to Scholand. We could see something up there that shouldn't be up there. And it's just absolutely magnificent. I know it's a difficult decision. I thank you for your hard work. I thank you for your decision with regard to Pleasant Street and changing the zoning so that we could have our neighborhood. I thank you for the Drake House. I thank you for so much. But I think it's so right that once this is gone, it's gone. And Lummester has so much to be proud of with regard to Scholand Farm, and it could be even more proud with regard to keeping it what it is. A beautiful home up there in relationship to all the people that go there, not just from the city, but from outside the city. They go to Scholand Farm, they see the history, they see the view, they see the solitude. It's, it's a gorgeous view of property, and it's something that Lummester is proud of and could continue to be more proud. I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rollo. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two?
My name is John Nelson, I'm a retired advisor, I live at four ninety-three Union Street in Lummester. Steve and Bob Bernard are very close, dear friends of mine for many years, and I've, because they are, I've been at their house many times over the years. Magnificent property, and a lot of history to it. You know, and I've been able to walk their grounds and walk the Scholand Farms, which I've been up there many times, okay? And I, I, I think it would be a mistake for Lummester, for you, for our, our city, not to make an offer for this property. The serenity, the peacefulness, the maintenance that Steve has done on that property over the years, it just blends in with the location. I, I really wouldn't want to see a commercial development up there at all, okay? And, so just from my heart, okay, I, I think that would be, in the best interest of Lummester, in forty, fifty years, the home of Johnny Appleseed, okay? I think it would just resonate well for the future, so I would hope you'd find favor with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two? I'll ask another time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C dash twenty-two? Is there a member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C dash twenty-two?
Elaine Perrault, sixty-five Wachusett Street. I am all in favor of preserving it, but I would hope that other funding could be found, rather than the proposal that sounds as if the city would need to take out a loan and pay on long-term. Is it possible that the money that is earned from the orchard currently be used to purchase the property, once perhaps a lesser fee could be arranged with the owners? I do know historically, that that house has not been a part of the Scholand Farm, except when the Washburn family owned all of that property, the caretaker, Mr. and Mrs. Woodsmall, lived in that house. But originally, when the old Dennis Wheeler, Florence Wheeler's father and Florence, lived where the house burned, the current site of the farm stand itself, they did not own that house of the Bernards, that was the Timothy Lincoln House. So it had, that particular section of land has not always belonged to the Scholand Orchards. So again, it would be wonderful if we could have it, there are so many things in Lummester. I know that there are many people in the sports area that are always looking for more sports fields, but I just don't know that it's fair to ask the taxpayers, when there are other things that are more pressing in the city, to offer to pay that kind of money for the property. And I do live on property that is sixty-one A, and I know that the Powers Farm is sixty-one A, all of that is in that area, as we are aging, and we know that that property will also need to go somewhere. These are all things down the road that the city might need to look at, especially where our property abuts the watershed. Thank you. And I know that it's not an easy decision. If I had won the megabucks, honestly, I would, I honestly, I, I would purchase it. I have spoken to the Lummester Commission, and I have spoken, this has been passed to the mayor, I have a historic building from seventeen ninety that I have offered free of charge, because I don't want to see it leave Lummester. But that, too, will require some money to move it and to restore it. So, again, I, I am historically minded, and I would like to see it there as part of the farm, but I just wish there was another way to get the pricing down. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C dash twenty-two?
Gary Zimmerman, forty-seven Lynn Haven Road. Again, I'm here as a taxpayer. We spend a lot of money throughout the city, and sometimes in good, good spent money, and sometimes bad spent money. And there's nothing against Scholand Farms, because my wife goes there a lot and walks, she tries to take me along, but I'm not a walker. So, we have Scholand Farms already, I look at it. We've already spent a few million dollars up there, which is a great purchase. Do I like the price of this, this property that came up? No. We got the police station, we had Francis Drake we purchased, and as people have said, there's more down the line. I know at the last meeting, this is a side note, I thought we were going to get a little more description of what the plan was for this building, because I think that was discussed in the last meeting, so I don't see any future plan of what the building's really going to be housed for, and what they're going to do, and all that, so that would have been nice to hear. When does it end for the taxpayer? Over twenty million dollars of taxpayers' dollars over the last ten years. Why is it for the police station, the land that you had, the buyer did the appraisal, but for this property, the city paid for the appraisal? Did you know when Garapi had the assessment done, he could combine three parcels of land together to get a very high appraisal on one of the samples, but the city assessor could not use that same combination to get that valuation? Really seems, I mean, the mayor said tonight that it's nothing, you know, hurry in this, but it's, the previous meetings, it seems like everything was getting pushed down pretty quick. So, I hope it doesn't get rushed through, and it's further time, and you get a better understanding of the property. Especially when you look at the timelines of the previous meetings. Buying this property will just turn into a lot more than just the purchase. As people have mentioned before, the ADA, the Title Four, Title Five, alarm system, sprinklers, how old is the well? And how, anyone test the water up there? What's the wiring like? Does all the wiring have to be redone, if it's knobbing too? What will be the ongoing maintenance cost? Is that the city, or is that Scholand Farms? And so what will it take to bring it to code? You aren't buying this property to separate the lots, but paying the price for it. You could be paying top dollar for something that may not be able to be built on. Buying a very old building of this size to convert it to a business for a small organization, to me, is not a good business decision. We all know there's cheaper alternatives, but then, I ask, what is the financial situation of Scholand Farms? Is it doing good or not? Let them buy it. My guess is, they will say they don't have the money, and if so, great, look at cheaper alternatives. Here are a couple of solutions. Check into a prefab building based on their specifications of the, the building that they want, and you get a modern, more efficient building. The better solution, as the mayor mentioned, of even renovating buildings, is CTEI. Let them build it per the specs, and have a great project for the, for the high school to do. And then again, it's done to their specs, what they want. Trying to convert a house to a business isn't usually the, to me, the best, best solution. I think you were elected by the residents that fund eighty percent of the city. Someone needs to make some better financial decisions, because our taxes are scheduled to go up according to the plan presented by the mayor till at least twenty twenty-two, to purchase something. So, millions or more dollars are going, our taxes are going up. I never thought my hard-earned money would be going into things like this. Not saying it's not a good buy, but there's so many things, every time I come to the city council, you're buying something, buying something, people need more, the police station, the fire station, they, they, they're looking for a new fire station over the next few years, I guess, because of their budget meeting that they had. So start saying no, councilors, and, and for the taxpayers. If you're not going to say no, here's my suggestion. Split the land, leave the house, purchase the land at a reasonable price. It's a gamble, whether that can be built on or not. You're not looking to build on it, and if it's not buildable, Mr. Bernard wouldn't be able to sell it anyway at a top dollar. So there's a little compromise there, in not purchase the house and build it to the specs of Scholand Farms, in some other way, in cheaper way, than eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And if, if you just buy the land, I think you should take it out of the stabilization fund, because there's millions and millions of dollars in there, and I think taking away, just say you purchased the land for two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, that's pennies that's in the stabilization fund, you wouldn't even have to get a loan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C dash twenty-two?
Hi, my name is Paul Gove, nine twenty-five Mechanic Street, Lummester. First of all, before even getting into the Scholand Farms thing, on this city council paper here, there is no mention of the address or anything about property besides Scholand Farms, and I think it's, it's just doing a disservice to the general public on keeping them aware of what's going on. I think in the future, if, if there are other properties that we're looking at, which the mayor has said, time, and sometimes some come up, we should at least publicize the address and location on every, every different memo, so that people understand where, what they're talking about, and what's going to be talked about at the city council meetings. That aside, I am opposed to this, I think it's, it's an extremely high amount of money, and we're not talking only eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're talking closer to a million by the time you start doing any renovations or maintenance. There are many historic homes in Lummester that are beautiful. Most of them are privately owned and privately maintained, and I think this, I really wish the best to the Bernards for finding a, a good purchaser who could continue to maintain the home the way they have. It just isn't a good fit for Lummester. The, the price is way over what we need to pay. Scholand Farms is a wonderful place, we, we've gone up there hiking and enjoyed it a lot. What they need is a, a farm building, with an office and other things, and we've talked about that before, and I would hope that they could come ahead with some proposal for a lot less money for a building that could be built on Scholand, that would accomplish everyone's needs a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gove. Is there any other member of the Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-22? A second time, any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-22? Third and final time, any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-22? Does any councilor have any question for the mayor or Mr. Mitchell? Council Dombrowski?
I, when Ms. Ms. Donardo was talking about restrictions on the Schollen farmland because of the way it's classified?
The APR.
The APR. I'd just like to know a little bit more about that. I don't know if, perhaps she can...
Other than, other than growing things, you know, like trees and, you know, produce and everything, everything else has been a no, right, Joanne? I mean, it's safe to say, everything else is a no.
Well, when you say everything else...
What kind of buildings you put on it, you know, pretty much anything. Anything after the agricultural piece of it is a no.
It's an agricultural preservation restriction, which means that it's preserved strictly for agricultural purchase, purposes.
Okay, but that would include buildings that are geared towards agricultural use, correct?
Well, for instance, I think we wanted to put a, I don't know if it was a windmill, I, I don't remember everything, most things, but it was either a windmill or solar, and the answer was no, we couldn't do that. And, right, Joanne, I mean, you think that's, you know, so there was like, well, this is like, a natural way, a, a, you know, self-sustaining way to, you know, generate power for the farm. And we weren't going to put up a huge windmill or a massive solar farm, but enough to, you know, power what was up there. So pretty much everything is a, is a no, other than the agricultural piece of it.
All right, well, that's a, that's a published document, isn't it?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, you can look it up online, it's, it's specific. I don't want to give you too much and then not have the right information, but...
Oh, no, no, I understand, I understand.
All set, councilor?
I'm all set with that, yeah.
Any other councilor have any question at this juncture? All right, it would be the finance committee, I was going to check with my committee first, and then I'll leave it to you, to legal affairs, Council Dombrowski, but I, I would pull my committee and recommend closing the public hearing. With respect to this, I'll check with the members of finance first. Council Cormier?
I would be in agreement.
Okay, Council David Cormier?
I agree on closing the hearing.
All right, Council Dombrowski, if you want to poll your committee?
Council Freedom?
You agree on closing it?
You agree to close it?
And you know, you know where I stand, so...
Yeah, we'll be in agreement with closing it.
All right, so I think we can jointly recommend to the councilor, suggest that we're going to close the public hearing.
Could I say one, one last thing?
Sure.
Before you close the public hearing. So I think what I hear is, and I've heard this in the community as well, we're interested in the property, it's a good piece of property, it's just too much money. So if, if, if the council was to table it, that would give us the opportunity to go back and sit down. Now the owner could say, no, that's, that's pretty much what I want, or I'll tell you what, if I get a better offer, I'll give you right of first. So there are a couple of things that can happen, but I think that's what I'm hearing, and I've heard that a number of times in the community, so...
Well, we'll, we'll take it up later, obviously, but, I mean, you know, we don't have any ability to negotiate anything.
No, no, but we can.
So, so, but, you know, we, I hear you, and we'll take that into consideration during our debate later on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on that. So where are we on the clock, Mr. President?
We're going to, we're going to pause for a moment, because we're within three to four minutes of starting the meeting.
Meeting.
So I'd like to do is, if we can just take a break for three or four minutes, we'll start the meeting, and then we'll recess and get right into the next hearing, which is vacation 30, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. We have to start at seven, anyway.
Right.
Rick, are we going to do the capital improvements? We're going to go to that?
Yeah.
The Lemonster City Council is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the common vote that stands as one nation, united, divided, and conquered.
We'll begin the council meeting with a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Council Ottinger is absent this evening. Council Bonanza.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Schellof Ozerfer.
Present.
Council Dombrowski.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
Eight members are present. To the assistant, to, to the vice president, we're going to hold off on the minutes until we get into the regular session.
Okay.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I think on behalf of the Lemonster City Council, it would be extremely appropriate to have a moment of silence for firefighter Christopher Roy of the West Fire Department, who lost his life in battle this past Sunday. Will you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Do we have a, a motion for recess? Seconded. Thank you. We're in recess. Back to the hearings, please.
Mr. President, we're going to do the informational meeting?
Certainly can, absolutely.
So, is that a, that's a, there was a finance, the resolution, so...
Right.
This is a public informational meeting with the mayor. Informational meeting regarding resolutions for grants for Phase Two of the park at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Streets, and another resolution regarding grants for the improvements to Fornia Field. And at this juncture, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
And just so the folks know, this is an informational meeting, it's not a public hearing.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, so the, the way the system, I think everyone understands now, is the way, and we've done this in the past, is that the way the state requires is, you can put in for more than one grant, but you need to appropriate the money, or at least pass the language, as if you were going to get, in our case, both of the grants. So we don't know exactly which grant we'll get right now, but we're going to have to do all the paperwork, just as if we were going to get both grants. And so, did you want to touch on the, the pieces of this? There, there were two proposals, one at Fornia Field, and the other one is on Mechanic Street. It would be the second phase of the Mechanic and Laurel Street Park.
So, in the past, we've put in for, we've put in twice for the Fornia Park grant, and we haven't received it. We did receive one for the Splash Park and Playground, but we have not been able to secure a grant for the other portion, which includes the fields. A grant, this grant, if awarded, would be new sports lighting at both fields, expanded outfield to meet tournament requirements, new bleachers, and improved pathways. The other grant is the Mechanic and Laurel Street Park, which is, Phase One is now under construction, which is the part closest to the actual corner of Mechanic and Laurel. This grant, that grant will be done by May of next year. Phase Two, which would be this grant, is, would continue that down toward Wells Court, and would be, would expand the whole park, an open space park, behind, behind the Third Street Playground. So as the mayor explained, we have to appropriate the money first. Any money that, any grant that we do not receive, the money can be rescinded. The council, if they want, can put that into the resolution, that I checked with the state, and they said that's fine. So the money would be rescinded. If we got any grant, it would be 70% reimbursement.
Mr. Mayor, if, so it sounds like one, one of these isn't going to happen, correct?
Correct. Well, I, I'll never say never, but we always hope that, we put in for a number of them...
The expectation is...
We'll get one.
You'll get one of the two. So obviously, if we authorize this money for the purpose stated in the resolution, and we don't get one or either, the, what, this, is this authorization condition?
No, you've just taken a vote, and that's it. We can't spend the money, we can get the grant, so therefore, nothing happens.
Okay.
It's basically the language they need...
Right.
...to show that the city's supportive of these projects.
In, in order to process the grant.
Right, in the past, what they've actually had, happened years ago, is people would put in for them, just, you know, for fishing, right? Let's see what happens. And then they'd get the, they'd, they'd get awarded the, the grant, they'd call them, and then later on, nobody appropriated the money.
So it's a, it's a demonstration of fiscally...
Of support. Basically like passing a resolution, saying we support this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question? Council Amashian?
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Went to good job on it. The, what's, what's really good about it, from my perspective, is the fact that we've identified two projects that need to be addressed. So regardless of, you know, the grant, the intensity, the value number, you know, I, I would support anything coming down, you know. Fornia Park is certainly a gem. At one time, Fornia Park was recognized as the nicest complex in New England, in the days of Benny Ruggel.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when it comes down to the membership up there, the softball league, the pop water, the water park, you know, everything else, the basketball courts, it's unbelievable.
Traffic cop on a warm night, I could tell you that.
It's amazing.
And remember, we purchased all the land between there and Grant Street.
Right.
So that's all our property in there.
The lights that they're going to put in is significant, and then the fence change, the, the people are just jacking home runs, they're going to be putting them off the top of the roofs up there before you know it. But the fact of the matter is, with the lighting specifically, the way that the lighting operates today, and the new systems, they're very focused out on the property itself, and not just lighting up the whole area. So it's going to be a great benefit to the neighborhood, and also as far as the players are concerned, too. So I, I hope that one way or the other, this comes to fruition. So thank you.
We've appropriated, I think, if you remember, last year, under the capital improvements, we appropriated $90,000 towards the project already. So we're, we've already got 90 appropriated towards it, so...
That's great.
We're in good shape. And you know what? They've been very patient down there, they've, they do a good job, they pay for everything, they groom the fields, pick up the trash, they do everything, they've been very patient as a league, and they, when they leave at night, they, you know, they visit our restaurants, and come from all over, and it's a busy place, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, it's a...
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have a question for the mayor at this juncture? Council Feckley?
Mayor, so I'm doing the math, so for example, if we did get the grant for just Mechanic Street, we would get 70% reimbursement?
Correct.
And then do we have the $90,000 to Mechanic Street, too? Is that just for Fornia?
No, no, just, just for Fornia.
Okay, so we'll go back.
Because there's, there are, if we don't get the grant at Fornia, we really have, we're going to really have to do something over there. I mean, those are old wood poles that are holding up. I think I explained the last time, just to refresh everybody's memory. So I asked Judy Sumner at the time to talk to the league, and find out exactly, like, what's the worst poles that need to be replaced, and that's how we appropriated the 90,000. So we're going to have to, whether we get the grant or not, we're really going to have to do something down there, regardless.
So we can go back, and so we can talk about Fornia Park, that, so at the end, if we do get the grant, we get the 70%, and we have the 90, so it would cost the city $120,000.
Is that how you worked it out? Yeah.
That's the thing. Okay, the other question is, does Fornia Park bring in any revenue to the city, other than what you said about people going to the restaurants, and is there anything that...
No, the, the pop water takes care of pop water, the league, Doug takes care of the league, we take care of the water park and general maintenance of the area, the common areas.
Okay.
And, so there's no...
There's no revenue coming in?
There's no revenue.
No revenue stream, okay. Now, a constituent asked me that question, so I thought it was a good fair one to, to ask.
In fact, they even rent out the concession stand, just, and it's all to, just to keep, you know, maintain costs.
Keep it afloat, yeah. No, I used to be the president of North Lemonster.
You know, I mean, it's cost, it's huge.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other councilor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Could I have just a couple of minutes? I thought it was going to be on the agenda for the capital improvements, but it is? Where is it?
Right above.
Yep, part of the...
Can we do it next?
Yeah.
Oh, beautiful. All right. This is the part where I talk fast. I know, I talk fast all the time. This is... So what you have that we couldn't replicate into any kind of format, that it's electronically and visually provided, is this multiple sort of matrix here spreadsheet in front of you, it's got a couple different colors. That's not going to be up on the screen for, for the public. Basically, it's the capital improvement plan for 2016, 17, 18, and then we project a little bit out to 19 and 20. So we do a five-year capital improvement plan, and just to explain it, what, what we've kind of reverted back from years ago, is the plan that you sort of make the plan, and then you sort of put it away, and then every once in a while, you pull it out. And what we do is, we actually update this every year, but also every month. And that is through our department head meetings. And at the department head meetings, things change so much. What was, what you thought could last another five years, you find out, it's not going to last any longer. And then things that you thought would only last a year, sometimes you find out, you can get another four or five years out of it through preventive maintenance, or, you know, sometimes, you know, that something was warranted that we didn't realize was still under warranty, therefore, it's off, it comes off the capital improvement. But anyway, so what you have here is a, a pretty good-sized list, and if you look at the list, most, everything is either completed or in progress. So we've made, the council, myself, department heads, taxpayers, everybody's made significant progress, meaning we've been using our funding, mostly free cash, to do capital improvements. Back to getting ready, using the good days to get ready for the bad days. And hopefully, there are no bad days, or if they are, they're way down, and they only last a, a little bit of time, and that's to correct itself and get us all back to reality. However, we do have some visuals that we can share with you tonight. So as I said, we don't, we do not just do a five-year and then update it. What we do is, we do a five-year, but then we do a, we update it every year, formally, but we update it every, every month. So we'll go around the table and ask departments to update us on specific projects in the city, where we're at with them, are we on time, are we on budget, and then, has anything changed? So in the, in the fall, the big thing would be, are we ready for winter? In the, in the, come the latter part of the winter, are we ready for, are we ready for the, the spring thaw and damage that we might have caused through plowing, et cetera? So anyway, we, we update it every month, and that, so the, the list can actually change, and it does. And the other thing that changes is, sometimes we hear that we might be eligible for a grant or funding from the state, so we might put that off until we find out exactly where that is. So the elevator at the senior center, we've sort of put on hold right now, but if we do not receive the money from the state, then that's something, I'll be back here this year to say, you know, we didn't get the funding for it, we're going to need to step it up, and we need to replace that, that elevator. So that's just an example of how things can, can change. So here's a selected list of completed projects. So here's a selected list of completed projects. You've all been involved in these, so it's not news to you, but it's good to share with, update it with everyone, and then also share it with the public. Remember, we spent a significant amount of money. We've really stepped up the efforts in terms of school security. It wasn't something that, you know, we thought of 20 or 30 years ago. And the world has changed, and we need to change with it, and one of our responsibilities is to provide safe buildings. And you can see there, we spent $305,000 on that radio system. We've spent $250,000 in school technology. Next year, I'll be here with a plan that will sort of expand that. We've been really good at sort of getting money from the state, School Building Assistance Program and the accelerated process, and that's, we did the roofs at Northwest, new roof and windows at Johnny Appleseed, new roof and boiler at Francis Drake, and new boiler for Fallbrook School. And we have others that'll be following. So that's been no impact to the school budget, so none of that comes out of the school budget, and the school pays the annual school project debt service total between the high school loan and these projects of about 2.4, I'll round it off, and that's up $800,000 from fiscal year 18. Vital equipment upgrades, everyone, every department knows, everything, it's not $100,000 for a piece of equipment, any equipment anymore. It's, the equipment is very expensive, but I have to say, every department takes really good care of their, of their, their equipment. And there's normal wear and tear, but they treat it like their own, and that's the most important thing. So what have we done on our capital improvements? We've done DPW dump trucks, we're still waiting for two, tractors and sweeper, waiting for the sweeper, also waiting for two new sidewalk tractors. EMA, remember, they did, put us together a really good deal for us. We said, geez, if you could find a really good deal, and lo and behold, they found this $50,000, $60,000 truck for $30,000. You passed an appropriation for new police cruisers, we're waiting on the arrival of those. The new ambulance, again, they have incredible amount of calls, they do a great job of keeping those ambulances up and running, that they end up with a lot of hours and miles on those ambulances. Same with the deputy fire chief truck, the wide apartment vehicles, new ladder, truck delivery, 90% FEMA reimbursed, and 10% to the city. City parks, again, using grants, Wendy Weeks, who nobody seems to be able to say no to. Revitalization of our downtown Central Park, donations and city appropriation for the wall repair. Remember, that was the Alzheimer's Park, and the wall was falling down, and we thought, we're gonna have to replace it. What else can we do here in this, and can we create a park? And then the idea of the Alzheimer's Park came, and I think you'd all have to agree, it's a beautiful park. We just installed benches, and there's more work, small modifications that'll be done in the spring. But a lot of that came through private donations to the city. Rebuilding of the Third Street Playground, we did 70% state grant. Mechanic Street, Laurel Street Park, 70% state, state grant. Manus Knock Brook, Phase Two, 100% state grant, and continued investment in the trail system and design of the Twin City Rail Trail. Again, this is all using our free cash. We didn't borrow for any of this. Information technology, I think when we all started, there might have been a computer in the building. We're not sure what was in that computer, but it was, it was there, and clearly, the phones were the biggest thing, they still are to some extent, but when the computer system goes down, which very seldom happens, it's, it's, the virtual is vital, is what I can tell you. So anyway, we've done upgrades to the public safety radios, equipment. We replaced all the radios in the city to all departments now, and that includes the school department. So, I can pick up, I wish I had my walkie-talkie here, I can pick up my walkie-talkie and talk to anybody in the city. School Department, DPW, police, fire, and we can all communicate on one channel, which is probably the nicest thing and the most efficient thing. Whenever there is an incident, it is chaos trying to switch different channels, and the system works incredible. I mean, you can pick up a, a radio and speak to any part of the city with no interruption. We're working on the, oh, the virtual server upgrade for city buildings, replacement of city hall phones, that's happening as we speak. I keep calling the phone system that we have, the new one, it was put in about 20 years ago, it's not new. We've purchased all of the extra pots off of eBay, and there are no longer any pots left. And what we'll do is, we'll watch when that system is up, the school department will sort of evaluate the system, and then we'll move on with the school department, and then the entire city will have a new phone system. Purchase of new voter equipment, launch of the new city website, launch of C Click Fix, launch of open checkbook. And those are all great tools that sort of, anyone can jump on their computer or their phone at 2:00 in the morning and find out information they want, and see where we wrote every check and what it was for, and also report a pothole or a defect somewhere that they saw. City building maintenance, police station cell retrofit, the fire headquarters repair, the new deck at Lemmonstern Senior Center. If you haven't seen it, it's beautiful out there, there's more water than we've ever had. City Hall roof analysis, energy upgrades to all municipal buildings, improvements to the emergency management, and the Veterans Center ADA ramp, and I think you've all seen that. It's beautiful, the job that they did, and then the veterans came later on, and the Boy Scouts to plant. We'll be back next year on the landscape for the senior, both in the rear and also that front area. We weren't able to use the grant money for that, so we'll come back with other funding for that. Adams Street, Cotton Street, 1.3 million state grant, Drake House renovations, greening the Gateway Cities, 800 trees in two years have been planted, infrastructure improvements to Main Mechanic, 2.5 million state grants, redevelopment of Wells Court area, Slack Brook remediation, LED light conversion, and if you have, if you see LED light somewhere blinking, let us know. Every once in a while, we find one that just starts flickering, we're not sure why, we replace it. But we're saving substantial dollars. Roads and sidewalks, $1 million annual paving, it's usually more than that. 250 annual sidewalk program, we, we're gonna step that up even further. Route 12 south improvement design, Route 13 improvement design, North Street design and construction. And if you haven't been up that way, they did get a smoothing course, leveling course out there, so people can get through there without dislocating their front end. Complete street sidewalks, $400,000 annual state grant. Laurel Street to the connector, that was a $4 million state grant. Small bridge, bridge program was a half a million dollars, and that's on Litchfield Street. The state is under design right now, we'll have that, that'll probably happen this spring. We'll really try to coordinate that, so that, you know, that's a street we might have to close down in order to get the project done. But we'll see if there's a possibility of keeping half the street open. And, water and wastewater upgrades, day street pumping station's been upgraded, upgrade to the Newtown plant for water quality, enhanced water replacement program by 1,300 feet, those are all done by our city employees, comprehensive stormwater management, and ASOR relining. Projects underway. Obviously, the police station is the biggest, the Barrett Park Office renovation, which is underway, Judy. Let's see, city hall server replacement underway, city government phone system, the software, hardware upgrades, school space needs study. And so right now, we're putting the final details to be able to go out to bid on that. We'll take, we haven't done an update on our space needs since the high school. We want to update that, we really want to go back and look at what space we have available, available meaning the inventory of the space, and are we maximizing use of that? And do we need to sort of take a look at either a particular school, or maybe a new facility down the road? But the first step in the process is school space needs study, and we'll be working on that this year. Mechanic Street Park, Lemmonstern High School Athletic Fields, which I should have to you... Do you have another meeting in December? No?
No.
If you wanted to have a special one, if you wanted to, we, we could come down and just informationally share what we have. We had made some changes after meeting with the athletic director on some sort of new ideas. Those should be ready in a week or two, and then, then put the hot plants together in the specifications, and we go from there. So that's good news. And that was, so we'll meet with the neighbors, because that, that's where a lot of the input came from, they have to live around this. Meet with them, we'll meet with you, and probably the school committee, maybe at the same time, if we can do that. And then the Pond Street Pump Station is underway. If you see them over there now, it's not a big pumping station, but it is significant to, to that side of the city. And, new traffic lights at North, Main and North Main Streets, if you've been through there, you notice the arrows, it's getting pretty confusing without them. New city hall furnace, we didn't want to pull the furnace out in the middle of winter, and have it supposed to be a three-day project and turn into...
Is that gonna be done soon, because we freeze on this corner?
It's intentional. Yes, well, we, we didn't want to do it in the fall, just in case we could finish it, and then we, then you'd really, really be cold. You'd have space heaters all over the place in here, it wouldn't be fun. So yes, spring. And appropriation of partial funds for light replacement for lights at Fournia, waiting on a new grant, continuation of fenced installation on Mill Street, we've just received another shipment of fence, spring paving program, we're really gonna accelerate it. We don't want to go too far into the year. Winter came early this year, we're gonna move that up, so that we're in, we end up paving towards the end of summer, the very beginning of fall, or maybe earlier, but we'll see on that. And we also got, received additional funds, about $250,000 for paving, so we'll, that'll all be part of a spring, summer paving program. And another round of complete streets funds in the spring, and the downtown Francis Drake sidewalks, and additional upgrades to the fire department. I think the fire chief gave a pretty good presentation here on exactly what it is they want to do to the fire headquarters. And that is it. So, I hope this all, I mean, take a look, everybody should be happy, you've done a lot of work. I know it creeps at you, it sort of crawls into it, one item, agenda, or one or two things, but you never see it in a total package. But tonight, I think you could look across and see that most things are either done or underway, and the next step of the process is to update our, our plans. So we go, and we've, we're done those, these, these past years, now we'll update it again to bring you five years into the future, and updating it in terms of, here are the projects that we'll be doing in 2019.
Nice work.
Team effort, right? I mean, we've got a lot done, but you never look at it that way, because you never see it all together. You never see it in one format, and this is a, a good way to take a look at it. So, the big things will be the fields at the high school and the police station. Those are probably the two biggest things. And again, I think you'll see some offerings of property that people are gonna offer us under 61A.
A few questions for us, councilor.
Yeah, it's not really a question, it's a comment. At some point, mayor, I think you ought to put a list together of all the grants that haven't cost the city anything. I don't think taxpayers realize how many things are done between Wendy and Roger Brooks at the DPW.
Absolutely.
Putting, fixing sidewalks, fixing infiltration, and, I mean, there's just so many things that are done that haven't cost us anything, and I think it'd be important to, to list that. People would be surprised, I think, at our total of what you two have put together, and I'm sure there's more in the city, but those are the two I'm aware of.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Yeah, good idea. And I know Wendy has that, it's just a matter of pressing the button.
Are there any other matters you'd like to discuss with us before we get back to the hearing?
Real briefly, there's one other issue on here, that is the, let's see what it's called, official name for it.
Bill, thank you.
What is it? This is the veteran status, this is a new...
Brave Act.
Brave Act. Couple highlights, it designates April 5th, this is a state law that's been passed, we need to accept the provisions, designates April 5th as Gold Star Wives Day, and the last Sunday in September is Gold Star Mothers and Families Day. It establishes a Massachusetts Veterans and Warriors Agricultural Program to enhance education, training, employment, income, productivity, and retention of veteran workers in or aspiring to work in the field of agriculture. Perfect. Did you hear that, Joanne? Is she still here? And then, the most significant one is, it allows parents of, or surviving guardians of veterans who died in service to their country to receive a real estate credit on property beginning January 1st, 2019, and that's why it's important for us to pass this tonight. It increases veterans' local property tax work-off program from $1,000 to $1,500. Then there are a whole other list here of other things that are, are important, but I just thought I'd highlight those, because those were the most important.
Any other questions for the mayor, or any...
And if anything comes up under the capital improvements, by all means, just let us know, and we can update you. But we left you the information, and if there are any questions, and again, we'll start the process of moving forward, and if there are areas that, of concern that you think we ought to take a look at, by all means, let us know.
Mayor, when do you feel you might be in a position to put a shovel in the ground up and back at Lemmonstern High School?
We'll know, I mean, the plan should be done, the preliminary plan should be done to the end of this week.
Right.
We'll have a better idea next week sometime, as we sort of get into it. But the rest should go quick, I mean, I think this is the piece that's really held us up. I'm hoping, I really would like to get them done as soon as possible, I really would. But, we've gotta do it right, and, and, we delayed a little to make these changes that, you know, that were really good changes, and, and I think it's gonna give us better use, better school use, but better use overall. And, and I think we just, I think the final conversation is, lights or no lights? And I think we really have to come to the conclusion, do we do lights, do we roughen the lights in the event that we put lights in 10 or 20 years from now? But really, we've gotta have that conversation, because if we don't at least put the wiring in for the lights and rough it in, then you're probably never gonna see lights there. But that's fine, if that's the decision, that's the decision. But we need to have that conversation. That's probably the biggest and only thing that we really need to do.
Advocating for that one component, Westboro High School has the kind of lights that you want to put at Lemmonstern High School, not the lights at Doyle Field, absolutely not.
Right.
And you, you stand 20 feet behind the pole where the lights are, you're in the dark.
Right.
And you can't see the lights from the backside of them, you have to be on the field to actually see the, it's absolutely amazing. So I'd imagine that's probably what the, the men's league's looking for as well. So that, you know, that has to be, that's a misconception that I think you get cleared up with an engineer explaining to the neighborhood what the deal is.
I think when we think of lights, we think of driving down 190, and you can see where all the fields are, because they're all lit up. Those days are gone, it's very expensive, not a good, an efficient way, and the lighting is much better for the players, and so, but that's probably the only thing. I think we've addressed most of the neighbor issues, I think they'll be pleased with it, and, and then, then it's just a matter of putting the, you know, technical pieces together and the actual documents to put out the bid.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you were shedding a light, and you left...
Yeah, I saw that, I didn't know if that was planned enough.
Is that part of the prop?
Something you had, holding, had a light on it.
Right there, baby. Lights go on, I can still...
I just want to point out, while we have the mayor here, that we have an emergency preamble.
Right.
C-32. We do have a letter from the police chief in support of it, but I don't know if any councilors had a question relative to C-32 while the mayor's here, in case there was additional information that was prompted by the communication, might not be a bad idea while he's here.
Good idea. Finance committee also with that?
I don't have an issue with it, but I see Councilor Shalfo, Zephyr has a question.
Right, thank you. I don't have a question about that, but I did want to ask the mayor, in terms of the athletic fields up behind Lemmonstern High School, I think the last conversations that we had, and Councilor Bledanza was involved as well, the neighbors were expecting some feedback. So my question is, I guess before the plan is finalized at the end of this week, is there any plan to get back in touch with the neighbors?
Yeah, that's what I said, I said we're gonna meet with the neighbors, because we've made significant changes in that entryway, that was an issue with Smith family. So we went around the whole perimeter and took each one of those areas and addressed those to the best of our ability. So we'll meet with them and then, and then, again, if it may be a combination, a combined meeting with the city council and school department and do that one meeting. I know things, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, but we're ready to do that at any time. I think we've got enough information to share now.
The neighbors will be happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody on C-32? All right, thank you.
Thank you for listening, and again, good work. Thank you for the teamwork. We're making substantial progress.
Mr. President, C-32?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, this is a hearing before the city council. C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the annual tax classification hearing be scheduled for December 10th, 2018, for the purpose of setting the annual factor used for fiscal year 2019. This, the legislative history is it was given regular course when introduced on November 26th. At that time, a public hearing was scheduled for this evening, and we are here with the assessors present, and I guess I'll let Mr. Mitchell, our chief assessor, lead off.
Thank you.
And I'll control Mr. Richard as well.
One board of assessor members on his way. You all received a tax classification booklet in your packets last week, I believe, not sooner. As always, we're going to refer to that, but for the people at home and in the audience, we always put that booklet online for informational purposes. I did attempt to do that today, and sometimes it takes a little bit, but if you go on to the city's website, into departments, and then city management, and then to the assessor's office, you'll see some flags on your left-hand side. One is table of tax classification booklets, and you should be able to see 2019. Pull that up and you'll get this information online, so if you're following along tonight, you can do that. There's a couple yearly notes that I like to make to make sure that the public is aware and any new members of the city council aware that it's important to note that the council is not setting the tax rate tonight, although we have a good idea of what that will be. Final submissions need to be entered to the Massachusetts Department of Local Services, and they have to approve those in order for us to receive a tax rate. There are four ways tonight that the council will decide on shifting the burden of taxes within different classes of property, and that's what this hearing is about tonight. We're going to talk a lot about valuation and levy and the dispersment of that. The four ways that the council can decide to shift the burden tonight would be to, would be, one, by classification, which means splitting the tax rate. Either you're going with a factor of one, which is a single tax rate, or shifting that burden onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property portion of the city and going with a dual tax rate. There is a option for a small commercial exemption. That shifts the burden within the commercial, industrial property class, doesn't have the effect on the residential class, but that is something to be considered. The residential exception, exemption does the same, but it shifts the burden within the residential class. Typically, we see those in summer communities like Cape Cod or more affluent communities that have expensive homes and have some burden they want to shift from the smaller residential homes onto bigger ones. And then finally, we have the open space discount. So those are the options before you tonight. Throughout the book, the public's going to see references to different classes of properties. I always go through this each year so it doesn't confuse the public, but when we're talking about classification, it's the use of a property, and typically, anything that you see that's classified under, that begins with a number one, for instance, a 101, classification means it's a single-family home. So anything beginning with a one is a residential use. Anything beginning with a number two would be open space use. Three would be commercial, four would be industrial, and five would be personal property. And just to clarify, when we talk about commercial properties, when we talk about classifications, a little bit different than, than what people might think commercial property is. For instance, if we're talking about a large apartment complex that has 300 and some odd units, we would think of that as a commercial property. It is not. It is classified under residential because it's occupied as a residential use, and that's the reason why it falls into the Class 1 class, which is something to consider when you're talking about splitting the rate, too. It's not going to affect those big commercial properties for residential use. I also like to talk about the effective date of assessment because that's very important to consider when we're looking at these assessments and the tax bill. The effective date of assessment that you're going to appear on your January 1st bill this year is January 1st, 2018, okay? Where you're going to receive the bill on January 1st, 2019, which means your assessment is already one year old from the current marketplace. So that's important to note. This year, when we evaluated and analyzed the single-family homes, we targeted what's called a median assessment to sales ratio of 96 percent. What does that mean? Means that we've analyzed 357 homes this year that sold in the single-family class. And in doing so, we compare our current assessments to the sale prices, and you have a assessment to sales ratio is what it's called. And what did they sell for and where was our assessment? Those indications or that, or that data allows us to understand, do we need to raise our assessments to get the fair market value, or in declining market, do we need to reduce those? So this year, we did need to raise those, and we did target a .96, which means we should be about 4 percent below the market. With that being said, we had 357 single-family sale. The median sale price this year was $270,000, and the median assessment after analysis is 258.3. With that being said, Rick Dondero is our, is tasked with inspecting all sales each year of all the properties that sold in Lomester to verify physical and analytical information for us. And I'm going to let him speak to some data that he looked at this year to make you all understand what we do in the process of valuation. So Rick, if you don't mind?
Sure. I'm going to start with single-family values. As Bill mentioned, we use calendar year 2017 arms-length sale transactions to create your 2019 assessed value. We did look at the 357 sales, and I did an independent analysis outside of the assessor's office, which I came up with a few more sales just based on what I considered fair market value. The assessors, we would not include estate sales or sales of multiple parcels, which in fair market value practices as an appraiser, we would utilize those if we deem them fair market value transactions. So my numbers are a little different on an independent analysis, but the data is the same. So your average assessed single-family assessment for 2019 is $265,409, and that's the average assessed value. My calendar year 2017 average sale price, and I'm not speaking to median, I'm speaking to the average. It's usually within the margin of area, era, but I figured I'd speak to averages because it's common sense for everyone and it's a common practice as well. My calendar year 2017 average value was $281,701, which I'm at about .95 percent of the 2019 assessed value. In other words, I, my analysis indicates we're at about .95 of the 2017 market value. So as Bill said, we're targeting a .96. We are within that. I believe we're a little greater than that, which is good to know. We don't want to over-assess people. So our numbers are coming straight from the street, you know, what's happening out here. So I did, I'm just going to do a quick version. I'm not going to run through every type of property, but just wanted to show you, show the public and share what we see. I'm just going to go quickly here. Condominiums in Lomester, the average sale price for calendar year 2016 was $150,976. The average sale price for calendar year 2017 condominiums was $171,197. So that's a 13 percent increase in one calendar year. Again, these are the, these are the sales that we're using to assess the town. I did peek ahead to see where calendar year 18 is, and it looks like the average sale price is $174,505, which indicates another 2 percent increase. So condos, three years running, there's an increase. Two families, calendar year 2016, the average sale price for a two-family in the city of Lomester was $219,263. Calendar year 2017, the average sale price was $230,464. That's a 5 percent increase in one calendar year. Looking ahead, 2018, we're just about there. We've got one more month of sales, roughly, and those went from $230,464 to $257,816. That's a 12 percent increase on two families. Three families, calendar year 2016, average sale price, $257,800. 2017, average sale price, $271,043. That's an increase of 5 percent in one year. And from 17 to 18, three families went from $271,43 to $283,768. That would be another 5 percent increase. So I'm just trying to demonstrate the trend. All property types over the last, I'd say, four years, three or four years, have been increasing. And lastly, I'd like to speak to the commercial and industrial properties for the fiscal year 2019 assessment. The average assessed value for commercial properties increased by 22 percent. The average assessed value for industrial properties increased 20 percent. Commercial industrial sales are analyzed very closely due to many factors. They're a little tricky because you have to check to see if there was any personal property, machinery, equipment, inventory, intra-corporate sale, or any goodwill namesake included with the sale. So they're very difficult to analyze and to get to the bottom of why they sold for what they did. It's challenging, but we do our due diligence. And the reason for such of an increase, in my opinion, you know, the 20 percent and 22 percent increase in assessed values over one year, is we had a lot of movement in sales in the industrial and commercial land area, and we had to follow suit. It was quite a dramatic increase, and I can point to a few sales that everyone can recognize. Reliant Medical paid $2.5 million for 9.83 acres, which quantifies to $254,000 per acre. Wendy's Restaurant on North Main Street was put together using two different parcels. One was a gas station, one used to be Bickford's Restaurant, everyone remembers that, paid roughly $910,000 for 1.78 acres. Granted, there was some removal, some demolition, get rid of a building, but again, the land value was through the roof on that one. 275 Whitney Street is an industrial building that sold for $350,000. It's on 1.5 acres. The building is not really worth too much, so that's really all a land value that's being driven there. We also had some industrial land sale on Nashua Street for $375,000 for 2.5 acres. After analyzing the commercial industrial sales from calendar years 2016 and 2017, we realized the assessed land values were much lower than fair market value. The assessor's office has adjusted commercial industrial land for fiscal 2019 to better reflect current fair market value trends. So that's, kind of gives you a window of what's happening in the city.
So Bill, the thrust of tonight, or the main thrust of tonight, is whether we stick with the factor of one or not. And the theory here has been for years that by maintaining the factor of one, that although we don't shift burden of taxation from residential taxpayers to commercial and industrial taxpayers, we pick up the benefit of encouraging the development of commerce and industry here to better effect, which ultimately directly and indirectly benefits the residential taxpayers through those value increases. So I looked at your numbers and noticed that if we shifted to a factor of 1.25, that that would save the residential taxpayer potentially on this rate that hasn't yet been established, but you're proposing, $1.32, but would have the concomitant effect of raising the commercial and industrial rates by $4.63 per thousand. If we went to a factor of 1.5, we would save the residential taxpayer 263 on that proposed $18.54 per thousand, and it would cost the commercial industrial taxpayer $9.27. Those numbers sound correct?
They're absolutely correct.
And, and this is because, I think, we determined that the combined commercial and industrial percentage of the tax base is about 23 percent.
That's correct.
So to, to save any real money on the residential side, you've got to really sort of hammer the commercial and industrial side. And then what I found very telling is the proof of sort of what Lomester has done for the last several years, or for as long as I can remember, is that when we looked at the, when we look at the tax levy over, over the year prior, the residential increase has been 3 percent, while the commercial increase in the tax levy was 16 percent, and the industrial increase is 9 percent. So, so that's, kind of echoes what Mr. Dondero was saying, is that, you know, these properties are getting more valuable, which is in effect creating a bigger, much bigger chunk of the tax levy, which I guess is good news for the residential taxpayer.
Right, exactly, and you make a good point there. I was going to get into it a little bit later, but it's true. Because of our community is made up of 22 percent or 23 percent commercial industrial, and the rest is residential, in order to shift the burden to give a significant decrease to the residential class, you're talking about a large burden onto the commercial industrial. Every dollar you shift, it's $3.52, and then it's cumulative as you go. And that's the reason why I think Lomester's always stuck with a single rate, and like you said, now we're starting to see the benefits of that. Other communities are struggling to get back to a single rate. We've held fast, and it's working out really well. We can see the commercial industrial portion of our class increasing, which is eventually reducing some of the burden onto our residential class. You're absolutely right.
So it's, so basically, the, the long-term plan is, like I said, is paying off now?
Yes, it is, it is. We're seeing it greatly.
Did any member of the finance committee have a question with this, Dr.?
How about the council? Mark, for me? Bill, the, so the residential assessment is paying 77 percent, commercial industrial's 23.
That's correct.
I'm pleased to see that.
Yeah.
We were really challenged a couple of years ago. I remember it was getting close where the residents were almost into the 80 percent range.
That's right. I think they were.
And the fear is that all of a sudden, they're paying 83 or 85 percent of the burden.
Right. And also, I think that you can see, you know, the estimated rate right now at $18.54, almost a $1, 73, I think it's 73, 79 cent decrease. You know, that's, that's telling. Because values are increasing so much in our city, it's, it's reducing the rate and offsetting the increase from our, from our budgetary expenses, too. So I think that's good. I think if you read the booklet, in short, we're looking at an average tax bill increase of 127, when typically it could be upwards to 200. So, so that's more proof that the commercial industrial class is picking up some of that burden, and we're doing it without shifting the rate. So I think that's beneficial, absolutely.
So, so is it fair to say the recommendation is to continue with the, the factor of one from the assessor's office?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And you indicated that there are, beyond the split, there are, what, three other issues, which would be the exemptions and the...
Right, the small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, the open space. It's just, it's not a fit for Lomester. Certainly, it requires severe due diligence on our part because that small commercial exemption is to reduce taxation or burden to small commercial properties under a million. You know, we look at a, a report that's given to us by the Department of Employment each year and who's on that list. I could tell you, our, our report was pretty thick this year. We had 385 properties on that list. Of that, 183 would qualify, and of that, how many are actually property owners in Lomester? You know, these are, these are entities that live outside of Lomester, they don't have an investment in, in the community, and it also shifts the burden to the industrial properties which can't qualify. So it's important to note that as well, just not a fit for us here, and that's why we don't spend a lot of time on it.
So the recommendation would be not to adopt?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then how about the residential exemption?
Same thing. I think we see that in a lot of Cape Cod communities or Canbridges or something like that, and what that does is it, it takes the average residential property value, and you, so you get a reduction in value to each residential property, and that establishes a new residential rate. But as you go up in the increase, you know, a $350,000 property in Lomester, as you go near or above that, that's when you start to break even. So anybody that actually qualifies for that residential exemption, and what that means is it's their domicile, it's their primary home in Lomester, will still see an increase. So although they get the exemption, it's not enough to offset the value. So it's not, it's definitely not something we would do, and it's not beneficial enough for us to reduce a certain class of homes by a small amount and then increase other people. You're shifting within the class, and it just doesn't make fiscal sense for us.
And the, the last part of that, I guess, is the open space discount.
Right, the open space, I mean, at this point, the, the valuations of the open space are so low, at this point, you know, you heard... At this point, you know, you heard the mayor talk about Chapter 61, 61A, or 61B. Those are programs that they can enter into by the state. It drastically reduced in value. A lot of our open spaces are in that particular class already, and then the others that aren't are open spaces that are excess lands in maybe a planned unit development that we've done in the past, and the valuations of those properties are so reduced that, given another 10 percent exemption on, you know, open space, just doesn't make sense. You're probably talking maybe $19 or $20 for the year. So, and shifting the tax burden for that just doesn't make sense.
So stick with the program across the board.
I think that's the message for tonight.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a couple more questions.
Sure, absolutely.
The first, thank you. The first one would be on abatements. Are we in pretty good shape right now as far as having to convey abatements with the market increase? Or, I know a few years ago, we had, for example, one shopping mall that was a significant issue. We've had condominiums in the past.
Yeah. So we, you know, Mr. Rich can speak to it, but one of the things, we also protect ourselves again, and that's, and you've seen it in the past, we fund the overlay account. The overlay account is something that we have some insurance to where we have a property come in, and this year, this past year is something to mention. We did have the Whitney Field Mall come in for an abatement. And Rick talked about a little bit about valuing those properties and how challenging they are. Well, you think about the leases that are involved in capitalizing those and coming up with a value for a Walmart, or a Home Depot, or the Whitney Field Mall, Orchard Hill Park. All of those things are very hard to quantify. So when you have these commercial appraisers and tax consultants come in and start arguing your value with you, now it's costing the city money to defend those values and give abatements. So a lot of times, we will speak with them, we come up with a valuation that we think is fair and appropriate, we go into a fee analysis rather than the mass appraisal that we do, and we use the overlay account to fund those abatements. And so we were in really good shape with them. We did speak with the mall this year. I think that's at a valuation of $28 million this year. In the past, it was close to $65 million. So we can see the brick and mortar industry of retail is struggling. We can see that because of the Amazon product that's out there right now, or Wayfair. So we're working with those people to make sure that they are fairly assessed, and we're ahead of the game, so we're not burdening the taxpayer with any undue exemptions or abatements. The other thing we talked about, to your point, that overlay account funds all of our exemptions, and that's important to note. The one before you tonight, the emergency preamble for the Brave Act, is important because we talk about giving a full exemption to Gold Stop parents, and I think we all know that the family in Lemmister could use that right now.
Historically, we've funded this overlay pretty conservatively. I know we, in fact, every, it seems like every, if I looked at the history of it, about every four years, we're able to return money to stabilization from it after we sort of reevaluate the cushion that we need. So it seems like that's been really well managed.
Yeah, I think that what we'll see, too, is it's probably going to be closer to every four, maybe five years now, because what we do is we look at the revaluation program we'll be in next year for 2020. That's when the Department of Local Services or Department of Revenue comes in and audits our books and valuations. It's a much more in-depth process of valuing, and typically, that's what raises a lot of values, and we start to see some abatements come in a little bit more. And after we get through that program, then we can see our liabilities start to decrease. And so that's why I think you see, we'll wait until next year to get through that. We'll fund it like we always do, but then we can see if there's excess and liabilities are down. We release those funds into stabilization, and it helps the community out, and it doesn't raise the tax burden.
The last question I have, if I may, regarding TIFs. It's not necessarily an answer for tonight, but if there's a possibility, we can take a look at what the status is right now, the current TIFs that are out there, some of them that are graduating, I guess, from the program.
Right.
To see what the compliance is on them, and if that has any effect at all upon the taxes.
We do look at those every year. Right now, I can tell you that we have a couple H-DIP programs that are out there. One is Summer Street, which we haven't seen, you know, really move forward yet, but it's coming. We've seen Adam Street, 108 Adam Street, that's in full swing now. One of the things that's important, and you'll notice on the top 10 taxpayers in the book, you'll see 25 Tucker Drive start to be one of the top 10 taxpayers. Well, if you remember, we did a special tax assessment to get that property fully occupied in AIS, and I think we all are seeing the benefits from that, STA. You know, we have AIS that's sponsoring our Festival of Trees upstairs. They're always looking to promote our community. They were huge in our proposal to Amazon. They, at this point, they are only receiving a 25 percent assessment break, and even with that 25 percent, now they're in the top 10 taxpayers. So they're paying an enormous amount, and so we're starting to see the benefits from that. So we definitely review those every year, and we're starting to see them come back. And with that being said, we're not seeing a lot of traffic for new tests. I think the last one we saw was process cooling, and they're starting to go underway. So that's a benefit to the city, but we certainly do that as well.
Thank you. Nice work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counselor Schalfo Zepa?
Thank you very much. I'm interested, I just have a quick question, I think, about new growth, which is on page 22. So new growth is, it's really a net gain, right, in terms of, it's not just a change in values or an increase in values, it's new revenue?
It's new revenue, that's correct. That's a good way to put it. It's new tax dollars, so the things that exist that we haven't taxed before, and that's why it's allowed into the calculation of the levy limit.
Right, okay. Good, I just wanted to clarify that. And then in this year, or for fiscal 19, the biggest, it's a huge, huge change in the commercial tax levy, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we had tremendous expansion in commercial, new properties, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Oh, the Reliant Building, okay, good.
Sure. That's a big one.
So it's not so much the number of the parcels, but it's the investment of a lot of the building that we've seen going on.
Right, no, which is huge. It's four or five times, I think, what it was in any prior year.
It's huge, yes.
Prior year passed. Okay, good. No, that's really good news, because new growth for 19 looks significant.
Yeah, it is. It's been really good. Like Mr. Bedenza pointed out, I think we've seen the benefits of that commercial industrial coming to fruition and giving, you know, giving us what the community needs. And also, I think, part of the thing we can do is we see we're raising to the 2.5 percent, but we're also keeping our goal of $5.2 million in excess levy capacity. So that's allowing us to have additional money, but also be able to take care of the budget. So those are all good things.
Thank you.
Any other councils, before I open to the public? Would any member of the public like to be heard with respect to C-30?
Hello, councilors. My name's Christopher McDermott. I'm with the North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce, 860 South Street in Fitchburg. As many of you are aware, I am the Public Affairs Manager for the Chamber, and we are a private nonprofit business association that represents, I'd say, roughly around 1,000 members, mainly small businesses, many of which include Lemmister as their home. I want to thank you all for your work over the years to maintain the city's business climate, both for Lemmister's existing businesses and those who might consider locating here. I would also like to thank the mayor and his administration, though they've stepped out, who have made economic development a priority. It is very clear that Lemmister is a city that is open for business. There are a number of directions from which a city might approach economic development. However, moving towards or maintaining a single tax rate has proven to be one of the most effective. It illustrates that the community is truly committed to growing its commercial base, and it benefits employers and residents alike, as a single rate indicates that the community takes the needs of that business community seriously, attracting additional investment and creating jobs in the process. A vibrant local economy also raises property values, increasing the wealth and purchasing power of the homeowners. Though some would argue that business owners can afford a higher levy, unnecessary taxes can provide a serious hardship to local storefronts and large manufacturers alike. For years, competition from, as you said, the internet and national chains has whittled away at the margins that Main Street establishments enjoy, leaving their proprietors with less and less for themselves and their employees. For larger industrial employees who face competition domestically and abroad, a split rate is often little more than an additional obstacle for those who might otherwise take advantage of the region's skilled workforce. In past year, you have recognized these facts and voted to maintain parity between residential and commercial ratepayers. I encourage you to continue that trend tonight and voice your ongoing support for Lemmister's business community. As always, we look forward to working with you and the rest of the city to promote economic development throughout the region, and we thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council with regard to C-30? Second time, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council relative to C-30? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council relative to C-30? Is any member of the council that has anything further? I'm going to check with members of Finance, would be my position to close the public hearing?
I also agree.
We'd ask that the public hearing be closed, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have one more hearing?
Thank you, guys.
We'll jump right on it?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
This is a joint one. Mark, you want me to do it?
You can do it.
Okay, this is a hearing before the Lemmister City Council, Communication 20, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinance entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic as Part of the Safety Improvement Project for the Intersection at the Lemmister Connector in Nashua Street. The Federal Highway Administration is requiring that a traffic control agreement exists between the city of Lemmister and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. We did get some communications back. We have a letter from the mayor dated October 18, 2018. Dear members of the city council, as part of the safety improvement project for the intersection at the Lemmister Connector in Nashua Street, the Federal Highway Administration is requiring that a traffic control agreement exists between the city of Lemmister and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Part of this agreement is to amend Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. The attached petition will amend Chapter 13 to that effect. If you should have any questions or require more information, please do not hesitate to contact this office. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. The actual ordinance, I should read the ordinance, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. An ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lemmister as follows. Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic is hereby amended as follows. Section 13-7 of the revised ordinances entitled One-Way Streets is hereby amended by adding the following. Nashua Street off-ramp from Lemmister Connector in a southerly direction. Section 1318 of the revised ordinances entitled Responsibility for Installation and Maintenance is hereby amended by adding the following. The following location shall be marked with appropriate signs as Keep Right. Nashua Street southbound at Lemmister Connector off-ramp. Nashua Street northbound at Lemmister Connector. Lemmister Connector eastbound at approximately STA 34 and 92. Lemmister Connector westbound at approximately STA 34-13. Section 13-79 of the revised ordinances entitled Yield Signs is hereby amended by adding the following. Nashua Street facing southbound drivers entering the Lemmister Connector. Section 1381 of the revised ordinances entitled Driving Upon Closed Street Prohibited is hereby amended by adding the following. The following location shall be marked with appropriate signs as Do Not Enter. Nashua Street southbound at Lemmister Connector. Nashua Street off-ramp southbound at Lemmister Connector. Section 13-89 of the revised ordinances entitled U-Turns is hereby amended by adding the following. Lemmister Connector westbound. Lemmister Connector eastbound. We also got a letter from the interim chief of police, Michael Goldman, dated November 5, 2018. Dear city clerk Huffman, in reference to Communication C-20 of 2018 referred to me by the Legal Affairs Committee on October 22, 2018. I, on behalf of the Lemmister Police, know of no good cause to oppose this petition. Before I go to the public, do any members of Legal Affairs have any questions or comments? Counselor Freedom?
It's pretty self-explanatory. We're being told to do that for the, you know, to do the financial part of the state and federal, so.
Counselor Bedenza, anything?
I agree with Counselor Freedom.
Okay, any other members of the council as a whole? Do any members of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 20? Second time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 20? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 20? Unless there's any opposition, Mr. President, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Does anyone need a break?
There's probably just a very minor point, but I would just suggest to the Finance Committee, because that was jointly referred, that we likewise would be in favor of closing the committee, I mean, the hearing.
That's right, I apologize.
That's no problem. Just for the record.
Perfect.
No objection from members of Finance?
None.
Be the same recommendation from Finance, close the public hearing.
Thank you. We now begin the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first speaker, Mr. Gary Zimmerman.
Gary Zimmerman, 47 Lynnhaven Road. Just to repeat, seat 22, I am against funding that, and if you decide to do with it, my suggestion as a taxpayer would be split the land and the house, buy the land, and then do whatever you can, but do it at a reasonable price. Last meeting I did, this is seat 22, seat 28, seat 29. Last meeting, I brought up a suggestion to add a little more detail, kind of as Mr. Gove brought up earlier, on some of the line items, so we, as the taxpayers, can at least know to come to the podium and talk about it and give our opinion. The comment sent me, I went home, and the comment that was given that would run out of paper, I was a little taken back by that when I thought about it, because the next day in the paper, Peter put an article, it's about four inches by 11 inches, and gave all the details of the three items that I did, that I spoke about, and one other one. So it wouldn't take up much room, plus on last month's agenda, the whole back page is blank. So I think at least from the taxpayer's standpoint, and it was also said later in the meeting that there'd be a little more detail behind it, and I waited that meeting, and Mr. Bonanza, Counselor Bonanza, brought up, read it word for word, and said, first time on the agenda, regular course. Still no definition about any of the rec. department million-dollar spending about that, and I didn't know, again, I don't even know who to call to find out about it, but at least I read it in the paper. So again, I'd have a suggestion, at least from the taxpayer's standpoint, because I love coming up here and talking to you guys so much, that if there was a little more about it, we could talk about it, because if we find out about it in the meeting, we can't give you our opinion. So just a little blurb, purchase of whatever Pleasant Street, the grant, the two parcels for the rec. department at $500,000 each. It'd just be nice to know what it's for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Bernard?
He's gone, I think.
Michael Padula?
He's gone, too.
Just a couple of things. My name is Paul Gove, 925 Mechanic Street, Lemmister. We were just listening a few minutes ago about assessment and how closely they can follow the actual sales of single-family homes, as a matter of fact, which I believe Sholen Farm, the house near Sholen Farms that we were talking about earlier, was assessed around $400,000, and the... around $400,000, and the $810,000 that Lemonster is talking about paying for that seems way off compared to what the assessors were saying houses were going for. So that's just one more thing to think about. And then the other thing is, while I was sitting here, there was a question about APR land and if buildings could be built on it, and I looked up a little bit, wonder if cell phones here, and yes, indeed, farm buildings can be built on APR land. And in fact, there is AIP, APR improvement program where there are grants available for monies to be acquired to spend money on improving farm buildings or adding new farm buildings, including farm stands and other things. So that is something for the future of Schollen that they could look into, just saying that there's money out there and these, they could improve the farm without as much cost to Lemonster, especially compared to spending over $800,000 on buying a private home. Also, on the other side of that coin, maybe we should be getting more tax money from that house if, if it's only assessed at $400,000, and we should be getting twice that. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judith Sumner, Director of Recreation for the city of Lemonster, 906 Richardson Road in Ashby, Mass. I'd like to speak to you this evening regarding the appropriation for grant funds for Fornia Park. I'd like to give you a little bit of information. I'm not certain if you had received the email with information with the budget and what the grant funds would cover. I have copies of that here, if you would like to have copies, I can give that to you. The request is for expanding Fornia Park and to address the safety concerns. We need necessary improvements there. I spoke with the state and asked why for the last two years we hadn't received funding for that. One of the reasons is we received funding for other projects, but also at the state they had said, "Just replacing lights is not enough of a grant request, it needs to be a project." So I went back to the softball league and I asked them, "What more can, what more needs to be done to address safety concerns at the field?" Well, they had said that the field was built in the early '70s by the Army Corps of Engineers, and when the field was built, they put stumps in the ground, and those stumps had rotted and caused a lot of sinkholes. So throughout the years, every year, they're fixing sinkholes there. So it's a safety concern, you know, for the residents. There's over 800 people playing on that field, you know, and that brings, you know, people to this community, it provides recreation for members in this community as well, and, you know, it's a great asset to the city. So we need to address the safety concern of those sinkholes in the fields. So also, as part of our safety concern that we really need to address is the lights. The wooden poles have very large holes in them, I don't know if you saw pictures of them. The pilated woodpeckers have made their homes in a couple of the light poles. My maintenance supervisor can put his fist in one of the holes, and Joe Poria has looked at those lights, and he said, "Just a matter of time, those poles are going to come down if we have some severe, you know, storm weather that we, on both of our fields." So we had, you know, requested funds for replacing just wooden poles was, you know, the least amount of money that would address some of that concern, but it's only a Band-Aid. We'd be replacing wooden light poles, but not replacing, you know, putting in energy-efficient lights. Those lights were put in in the '70s. So that's a concern, and they, you know, they flood areas, other, you know, neighborhood areas, they're not directing on the field, so those lights are not energy-efficient and suitable for, for tournament plays. So we need to address that. So what we, what I talked to the softball league about other needs on that field, and it doesn't meet softball tournament regulation size, so we need to move the field back. So if we move the field back also too, as part of the grant application, you get points if you put in areas for walking, making areas handicapped accessible, if you put in shade for trees, if you provide other recreation. So I included in the grant application all of the points that they were looking for to give us more points to make this a project that the state would fund. So if you, on my list, I had bulleted all items on here of what's needed. The present conditions are, you know, the wooden light poles are outdated, they are close to being condemned, and they could fall at any time, and that's a real concern. So if we don't get the grant, we might just have to Band-Aid it. I hate to put $90,000 towards just putting in wooden poles and not new lights and doing all of that, when we really should be putting in the state-of-the-art, energy-efficient musco lighting and metal poles. And that's what we really should have, that's why, you know, we put in a grant request for doing musco lighting. So I consulted Weston and Sampson, they've done numerous projects throughout the state, they worked on all the ballfields in the city of Worcester, they've worked on the Fitchburg projects, so they're a very reputable company, so they worked with me regarding, you know, looking at the budget that the softball league worked with us on trying to obtain quotes for. So they put together, they worked with us on putting the budget together for this grant application and did the design for us of, you know, pinpointing where the improvements would be as part of the grant application. So what I said, the excessive sinkholes need to be addressed, also our bleachers, we have some old steel bleachers, and some of the angle iron has bent and it's sticking out, and it's unsafe, and some of the wooden boards are constantly rotting, so, and they don't have protective sides on it, so they don't meet the new safety guidelines for bleachers, for that height of the bleacher, you need to have side guide rails, guardrails on there. So we really should be replacing those as well, especially with that number of people coming to the fields. I mean, those are just the people playing, there's also people watching the games as So also, what we would like to do is expand that walking trail so that the trail would go down towards the brook, because there's native brook trout there, so it would be nice to be able to provide some fishing also for people that are wheelchair-bound or have mobility issues. So those are the things that, you know, we, we would like to have you fund, and if we, you know, if the state will give us $400,000, we only need that $171,000 as that amount of money the city would put up, and you've already put $90,000 towards that, so it would, you know, it would be a shame to, you know, spend that $90,000 on the wooden poles and turn down this grant. So I'm hoping that we get this grant fund, we don't know, I'm hoping the state will fund two projects, because normally they fund a Phase Two of a project, which is the Mechanic Street project, and that is needed as well for this community, but we need both projects. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down, appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Doug Hare, I'm the president of the Lemonster Adult and Mid-S softball Association. I live at 75 Priest Street in Lemonster. The league is, has 53 teams with over 800 players throughout the league. We play six days a week, Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Sunday. We play three to four games per night, Sundays we play four to eight games, depending on our scheduling. We, we take care of the fields, the grass cutting, anything of that nature. The last few years, we put over $25,000 into the fields to renovate them, make them playable, make them more accessible, and things of that nature. The problem is the lighting. As Judith said, it's, they're rotted, and we really, if we lose our lighting, we lose the league, because we won't be able to play at night, maybe get one game, that's about it. So we're here to ask you for your support of that project, and I think Fornia Park is probably the second most-used recreation area in the city, other than Doyle Field. It's constantly used for softball, basketball, the aquatic park, pop on and things of that nature. So we are here to ask for your support, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you for everything you do for that league and the community. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. My name is Peter Campabasso. I am here on Petition 1919, I believe, Middlesex Integrative Medicine. We are requesting a local letter of support or non-opposition for a potential or for provisional site approval for a facility in Waltham. Recently, as you recall, this past spring, they received a special permit from the Lemonster City Council to build a cultivation facility at 25 Mohawk Drive. The only condition in the permit at the time was to get the host agreement resolved with the mayor's office, which we did this past June. Recently, they received a provisional certificate for a second dispensary, a retail dispensary that's in Waltham, which is what the request is before you tonight. In no way will they be changing the facility or the operation that was approved at Mohawk Drive. It's simply a requirement of the state. When they do receive the provisional certification and they need to submit their sighting profile for the Waltham, one of the requirements in the application is to have a local letter of support or non-opposition from the host community of the cultivation facility that will be used for this dispensary. That's what the request is, I wanted to hopefully eliminate any confusion, they're not going to change anything at the Mohawk Drive facility, it's just a requirement of the state to notify Lemonster that this cultivation facility will serve this new location. And if any of you have any questions, you can reach me at my office, but I'm sure I'll be back when the petition comes before the council formally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Lori Bedoin, I live at 471 Grant Street. I'm a player in the league, I'm also been on the board of directors for over 10 years, and I just would like to, first of all, thank you for even getting it to this point. We've worked probably the last five years or so, meeting with the mayor a lot and trying to get this to everybody's attention, working with the, Joe Poria, he's helped us a lot trying to fix the lights, but we've got to the point where Judy and I have just sat there and said, "It's pretty much, we can't fix them, we're at that point." I also would like to explain a little bit about the softball complex and the field, and that it has been there since the '70s. I travel a lot playing softball, and there's a lot of money that the city could make with teams coming in here to play on the weekends, and at this point right now, our fields don't allow that because the fences aren't at 300 feet. It's super important. Also, the lighting situation is crucial too. But there is tournaments every weekend, you can bring in anywhere between 15 to 20 teams, those teams will stay overnight, they'll eat in the restaurants, they'll, they'll buy food, and you had asked earlier, does the league bring any money? This would bring a lot of money to the city, there's no doubt about it. On top of, like we said, we have 53 teams, it's been over 50 teams for the 10 years that I've been on a board. We have five to six, 800 players, it's crazy. We do have the best league in New England by far. When I travel, people are like, "How do you have a league with 50 teams?" It's crazy. And our fields are nice, but they could be pristine, they really could be, and just this little bit of help improvement with the lights would be huge, so I ask you, if you can find a way to give back, we have a great park, but we could have the best park in New England without a question. Thank you.
Lori, as the council president, I can ask for clarification or give it?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering, does Doug Hare realize you're a heck of a lot better than he is in softball?
(laughing)
I just wondered if he's still trying on you.
He's all right, he's all right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Deb, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the last name?
She's also.
She's also, okay, thank you.
She can't talk, Lori.
Thank you. And is it Richard Wheeler? He may have spoken earlier tonight? Yeah, Wheeler did, yeah, okay. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the council on any matter? Second time, third and final call? If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. What's the deal with this right here? Okay, council's back in session. I'm going to yield the floor to the vice president, who is also the chairperson of records, and we have a few records to take a peek at tonight.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the meetings of October 9th, October 22nd, and November 26th, and I have reviewed them and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file. The minutes of 11:13 are forthcoming, according to the city clerk, and the minutes of September 24th were received by me today, but I have not had the opportunity to review them. At first review, they do look to be in order, but I would like to have one more week to verify that.
Okay, fine, that's fine. So we're going to roll those over to the next chair.
Right.
If a special meeting came up, we'd throw those on at that point.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Other than that, we just roll them in. So we have three, October 9th, 22nd, November 26th. Are there any comments or questions on those minutes? If not, thank you very much. We'll now move on to communications from the mayor.
Appointments. Michael Shine, Office of Emergency Management, Admin Unit.
This appointment is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the city clerk to invite Mr. Shine to a, for an interview at our next regular meeting, and also if we could be supplied with a resume.
Okay, thank you. So the first scheduled regular meeting of the city council, Mr. Shine will be brought down here for the interview, okay? Thank you. We now have orders, we have Communication 32.
C-32, Emergency Preamble, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $150,000 to the police overtime account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
This communication request has been given emergency preamble. Are there any questions on the emergency preamble? If not, all those in favor of accepting it, as such, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to, excuse me?
I'm not in favor of the emergency.
By a vote of seven to one, the communication is now before us. I yield the floor to the chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-32, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $150,000 to the police overtime account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. There is a letter that goes along with this communication from the interim chief of police, Michael Goldman, to Mayor Mazzarella dated November 26, 2018. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the police overtime account serves to fall short before the end of December. I'm requesting the transfer of $150,000 from stabilization to police overtime with an emergency preamble. An off-duty injury resulting in surgery to a sergeant sharply increased supervisor overtime, placing this request a month earlier than normal. Also, a lengthy disciplinary absence from the third shift increased overtime costs on that shift. I anticipate the recent release of five new officers off of, off-field training should substantially slow overtime spending for the remainder of the fiscal year. It would be my position to grant C-32. Mr. President, I'll ask you to check with my committee members.
Thank you. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President, you have my recommendation of Finance is to grant C-32.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation right to grant Communication 32. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication has been granted, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of $150,000 be appropriated to the police department overtime account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you. Counselors heard that recommendation right. Again, are there any questions or comments on the communication? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 33.
Communication 33, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $17,500 to the police overtime account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 33 is again referred to the chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regular course on Communication 33. Communication 34. Communication thirty-four.
C-34, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Relative to the appropriation of forty-five thousand dollars to the library expense account, seem to be transferred from the library state aid reserve for appropriation account.
Communication thirty-four is referred to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication thirty-four. Communication thirty-five.
C-35, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Relative to the appropriation of one hundred sixty thousand five hundred dollars to the highway capital outlay expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication thirty-five is referred to the chairman of finance.
Again, first time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication thirty-five. Communication thirty-six.
C-36, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Relative to the appropriation of forty thousand dollars to the school department expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication thirty-six is referred to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication thirty-six. We now have communication thirty-seven.
C-37, Emergency Preamble. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Request the City of Lemmonster adopt the Brave Act prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, in order to take effect by January first, two thousand and nineteen.
As indicated, this is an emergency preamble. We'll vote on that first. Are there any questions? If not, are there those in favor of the emergency preamble being accepted, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, communication thirty-seven has been accepted as an emergency preamble. It's to the legal affairs committee because it is adopting a statue of mass general law. So, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Communication thirty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Request the City of Lemmonster adopt the Brave Act prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, in order to take effect by January first, two thousand and nineteen. The state legislature recently enacted the Brave Act. Several of the provisions within that act require local adoption. I'll read those provisions quickly. They're fairly brief. It's section twenty-second G of chapter fifty-nine. Real estate that is the domicile of a person but is owned by a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for the person's benefit. If the real estate would be eligible for exemption under clause twenty-second, twenty-second A, twenty-second B, twenty-second C, twenty-second D, twenty-second E, or twenty-second F, if the person were the owner of the real estate. Twenty-second H of chapter fifty-nine. Real estate to the full amount of the taxable valuation of the real property of the surviving parents or guardians of soldiers and sailors, members of the National Guard, and veterans who during active service suffered an injury or illness documented by the United States Department of Veteran Affairs, or a branch of the armed forces that was approximate cause of their death, or two are missing in action with a presumptive finding of death as a result of active duty service as members of the armed forces of the United States, provided, however, that the real estate shall be occupied by the surviving parents or guardians as the surviving parents or guardians domicile, and further provided that the surviving parents or guardians shall have been domiciled in the Commonwealth for five consecutive years immediately before the date of filing for an exemption pursuant to this clause, or the soldier or sailor member of the National Guard or veteran was domiciled in the Commonwealth for not less than six months prior to entering the service. Continued surviving parents or guardians eligible for an exemption pursuant to this clause shall be eligible regardless of when the soldier, sailor, member of the National Guard, or veteran died, or because missing in action with a presumptive finding of death, however, that the exemption shall only apply to tax years beginning on or after January first, two thousand and nineteen. Such exemption shall be available until such time as the surviving parents or guardians are deceased. No real estate shall be so exempt which has been conveyed to the surviving parents or guardians to evade taxation. And this was also a recommendation that was submitted to our director of veteran services, Richard Votor. My position is to grant communication thirty-seven. I'd ask you to poll the committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Frida.
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from this.
Okay.
Due to a possible conflict.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted. The acting second member, clerk, Councilor Bonanza.
I would support it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation to grant communication thirty-seven, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, the recommendation to grant communication thirty-seven. This will require a two-third vote of the council as a whole, which is six votes. We have seven voting members. I'll begin with Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor, excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Feckley.
Yea.
Councilor Schelle-Folziffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
And I should record, gee, we've got the seven. I apologize. I thought you were abstaining. Thank you. It passes. Good job. Sometimes we just have to deal with it the way we get it. Okay, we'll now move on to page four of the agenda. We have petitions first time on the calendar, seventeen dash nineteen.
Seventeen dash nineteen, National Grid, To install one singular own pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately twenty-two feet south of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street, and continuing approximately plus or minus... I think it's...
Feet?
Yeah, feet, in a south direction.
Okay. Seventeen dash nineteen is referred to the chairperson of public service.
Eight.
Regular course, Mr. President. We have to establish a hearing date, January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty-eight PM.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation for regular course with a public hearing to be established on January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty-eight PM. All those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, regular course has been awarded with the hearing scheduled, as said. Eighteen dash nineteen.
Eighteen dash nineteen, National Grid, To install one singular own pole on Tolman Avenue, beginning at a point approximately one hundred thirty-five feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Dingly Street, and continuing approximately fifteen feet in the northeast direction. National Grid, To install one pole with an acre and guy, on private property with an easement, to service house number thirty-five.
Eighteen dash nineteen is again referred to the chairperson of public service.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course in establishing a hearing for January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty-nine PM.
Thank you. We'll vote on that hearing date. Again, it's gone regular course with the hearing on one fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, six thirty-nine PM in the council chambers. All those in favor, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing. Thank you. Nineteen dash nineteen.
Nineteen nineteen, Middlesex Integrative Medicine, Care of Law Office of Peter A. Campabasso, V.C., Request a letter of support or non-opposition to Middlesex Integrative Medicine for proposed retail RMD located at two hundred five Second Avenue, Waltham, Mass., to be signed by the mayor to authorize members of the city council.
Petition nineteen dash nineteen is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, being first time on the calendar with a referral to the mayor's office, and I'd ask my committee members if there's any other referrals they'd like on this matter.
I yield the floor to Councilor Frida.
No.
Councilor Bonanza.
The only thing I would say is, I think the referral to the mayor should specifically ask what the conditions of the initial host agreement were. Because this obviously is sort of a game changer. I don't know what the conditions were when that was originally negotiated. Apparently, there was one RMD at that time. Now, there's going to be two. And I want to see what the impact is to the existing host agreement.
Okay, good point.
Okay. Go with that?
Yep, we'll adopt that.
Get a copy of it.
Thank you. Nineteen dash nineteen has been given regular course with the referral to the mayor with said question. Thank you. We'll now move on to matters before the city council. We have communication twenty-two, which is jointly referred to the finance and legal affairs. I'll begin with the finance chair.
Yes, Mr. President. C-22, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Relative to the authorization, relative to authorizing the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor to borrow eight hundred and ten thousand for the purpose of funding the foregoing acquisition and costs incidental or related thereto in accordance with general law, chapter forty-four, section seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and in accordance with general law, chapter forty-four, section twenty, any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of project costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, which we've heard this evening is the purchase, or the proposed purchase of the property located at eleven eighty-three Pleasant Street. It, I guess, seeing this is in finance first, we heard, we had a public hearing this evening. We heard from various parties, both the mayor as well as members of the public. This particular communication, I've got a number of issues with, not the least of which is the price. It would be my recommendation to my committee members, or my thought, at least personally, and I'll ask you to poll my committee, Mr. President, to table C-22.
You have a recommendation?
I would ask you to poll my committee members. If they're in accord with that.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I think I share the same concerns as Councilor Bonanza, but I would agree to table it as well.
Third member, Councilor David Cormier.
Yeah, thank you. I have a lot of concerns with this as well, and I would, I would never accept this in its, in its current form. So I could almost give it, you know, leave to withdraw without prejudice. You know, I think at this point, you know, we're in a situation where we're proposing to buy a piece of land that we don't, we, it kind of reminds me of two-ten Lancaster Street. There's no plan. There's no studies been done. We don't know what the feasibility is to turn this into what we need to turn it into. And I'm certainly never going to accept it the way it is. I can go along with tabling it. I'm okay with that, but I could just as well give it leave to withdraw without prejudice as well.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify your committee report.
I appreciate that. The unanimous recommendation of finance, at least, is to table C-22. I mean, as mentioned during the public hearing, we're not in a position to negotiate anything. I think the finance committee obviously has an issue with the price, a significant issue with the price. Table, leave to withdraw, this thing would have to come back and answer a lot of questions, not just price, in my opinion, but I'm willing to table it at this juncture. So I guess we could turn it over to legal affairs now and see what the position is on that committee, and we'll go from there, Mr. President.
Right, thank you. So to qualify finance, the recommendation is to table. And now, you have the floor to the chairman of legal affairs.
I, I share all the concerns raised by the finance committee. I share the concerns raised by Councilor Frida that she made during the public hearing. I could go along with tabling it. I could go along with leave to withdraw. I could go along with denying it. I'd ask Councilor Frida her position on this.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Frida.
I don't support tabling it. There's too much language in there. I don't want it to come back and have to start amending numbers, amending conditions, and that's what we would have to do. I either would support giving it leave to withdraw or denying it. Let them come back with something with a realistic figure. My biggest concern, again, is that this is no way worth eight hundred and ten thousand dollars the way it is. I want to, I won't even consider it until I see a stamped engineered plan of four lots to prove that value. If not, then the value's going to come down. Simple as that. So rather than, I don't want to start amending this. It's too, it's too complex in the terming, terms of the bonding, that I would prefer to see it given leave to withdraw or to deny it. I'll leave that up to you, either way, and let them come back with it.
I yield the floor to the third member, Councilor Bonanza.
I, I, I'm sort of betwixt and between tabling it, leave to withdraw. I'm not sure it really makes a difference, honestly.
Only in the debate recommendation.
Yeah. Chairman, whatever your pleasure is.
I, I would go along with leave to withdraw, to be honest with you. I think, I think it just makes sense.
I yield the floor back to Councilor Frida.
I agree with that.
Okay, so we have two recommendations right now. The first one is to table, and the second one is to give leave to withdraw. So we're going to deal with the first one up, and that's finance.
All right, so.
Okay, so the recommendation from finance was to table.
Table, correct.
Correct. Do you have any reconsideration, Mr. Chairman?
I'll, I'll, I'll check with my committee members. I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of difference because this thing's going to have to come back in a whole different form, whether you amend it.
Right, right.
Or whether it comes back anew. I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of difference, so I'm, I'm not tied, I'm not tethered to one recommendation or the other, frankly.
Right.
So I'd check with my committee members if they've, if they've had a change of heart based on the legal affairs recommendation.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I still, I will stay with my original thought, which is to table.
And the third member?
Well, you know, I think it's pretty clear it's not going to be accepted in this form, and I, you know, why, we got enough stuff sitting in the folders as it is anyway that's tabled. So I say just give it leave to withdraw without prejudice, and if they want to renegotiate or rethink or whatever they want to do, they can resubmit it.
I yield the floor back to the chairman. Your call.
To make this easy, I'm going to, the recommendation, majority report of finance is going to be leave to withdraw.
You certainly have made life easier from my seat.
I aim to please, Mr. President.
I think I knew where we were going to go with our vote process, but thank you, thank you. Okay, counsel's heard the recommendation read for leave to withdraw on communication twenty-two. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Feckley.
Yea.
Councilor Schelle-Folziffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I should record, gee, by a vote of eight to nothing, leave to withdraw has been given to communication twenty-two. Thank you for your work. We'll now move on to financial report. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July one, two thousand and eighteen, with a balance of fifteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars in the stabilization fund. We've increased that fund during the course of the fiscal year by a total amount of four million, one hundred and seventeen thousand and seventy-four dollars. We have decreased the account as a result of appropriations already approved by this council or pending before this council in the amount of two million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars, leaving a balance, if all of the appropriations are ultimately approved, at sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with communication twenty-eight. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, Relative to the appropriation of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the recreation department capital outlay expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We heard from the mayor earlier this evening, as well as the recreation director. This one relates to the Fornia Park improvements. We are talking about earthwork and improvements to the fields, notable expansion or retrofitting of new electric lighting, new bleaches that are safety compliant, and all the construction that goes along with this. The grant is seventy percent if it's obtained, which would lever, leverage five hundred The grant is 70% if it's obtained, which would lever, leverage $572,000 of improvements for a municipal share of $171,600. Mayor was asked specifically that if the grant is not obtained, will any of this money be used or appropriated in the absence of the grant? The answer was in the negative. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-28. I'll ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Third member, Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Please qualify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-28.
Councilors, are the recommendation read to grant Communication 28? Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Councilor Cormier, David Cormier?
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I, I wholeheartedly support, you know, this communication, and I really do hope that the city gets this grant. I think it's very important. You know, I've been here for nine years now, and I can remember many, many years ago having a discussion with one of the speakers tonight, Ms. Bedoin, regarding lighting there, and, you know, these things certainly, they don't just happen overnight, they take a long time, there's a lot of planning, and you have to wait for, you know, the right time when a grant comes along that you can apply for, so, you know, I think it's very important that we, we seek this, and, and I hope that we get it, because it's, it's really warranted. That place, I'm sure anybody that lives in Leominster knows how busy that place is, and, and it certainly does bring a lot of revenue to the city. I can imagine that a lot of people are stopping at all the restaurants and businesses on Central Street, coming in and out of town, so I think it's important, and we certainly have to maintain it. It should be something we should be proud of. We have people coming in from out of town, and, you know, that's kind of, you know, something that they, I'm sure, take note of, you know, how, how much we invest in our complexes like this, so I definitely support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Feckley?
I came here tonight actually on the fence about this, I, not to, you know, use a word that I'm going to bring up again, fence, but Judy Sumner, with her presentation, safety is probably one of the most important things that we can do here, is, is make sure that people are safe. Ms. Bedoin actually brought me right around to a situation that perhaps we could work with Judy on, and that is the fencing, that perhaps could bring in some revenue to the city in the form of tournament fees, so we could maybe talk about that. So, I think that the safety issue and the possibility that Fornia Park could be a revenue maker for the city is what will convince me to support this tonight.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments or questions?
Just slight issue, did we qualify our committee recommendation yet?
Oh.
I don't think we did.
Probably not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, my fault.
Just trying to keep on the count.
No, you're right. Back to the chair, thank you.
So, I, I'm not sure that Councilor Pauline Cormier was polled yet.
I was.
Oh, you were, okay. So, the unanimous recommendation of finance is to approve C-28.
Okay, thank you.
Back to, back to discussion.
No problem.
Sorry.
Councilors, are their recommendation, I apologize, my fault.
Nope, no worries.
Are you the floor, Councilor Feckley, you all set?
I'm still going to support it.
Okay. Councilor Pauline Cormier, you are next, I believe.
I just want to say that, and, and my kudos goes out to Mr. Hare and Ms. Bedoin, because I've been on that field, they've played on that field for a long time, and the only reason they can continue to play on that field is because of the work that that board does, that their volunteers does. They, Judy Sumner, I don't know how she runs on, on her budget anyway, but I think that field and the use that it gets now, big kudos to the people that, that volunteer their time and their efforts over there. So, I, I fully support this.
Thank you. Council Frida?
I just had a quick question, not about this, but, well, I guess it's in regard to this, but, do we have any idea about free cash?
Oh, no, not at this juncture. Not at this point of the year.
Yeah.
I'd be in shock, no. I, I, I mean, I, I can't, wouldn't even hazard a guess.
It'd be nice not to take everything out of stabilization.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that we'll, we'll be paying it back.
As long as we have enough free cash, that's the point.
Oh, we, I'd be surprised if we didn't.
All set? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Bedanza?
Yeah, I, look, I had the, the great pleasure of years back, coaching in the Papua Naa League for five years, and being involved in that program, and seeing hundreds of, I mean, you couldn't squeeze more kids on that field, between cheerleaders and football players, of, you know, from age, age eight to age 14, and then, of course, adding to it all those softball teams in the league. It's, if, this property is of a calculable benefit to the city of Leominster, in terms of the opportunities that it provides our populace for recreational activity, which is invaluable. So, I, I think this is great, it's another thing that makes our city a wonderful place to live, and, and I think we should all be proud as, as, not only officials, but more importantly, as taxpayers, to support this kind of thing, while leveraging a, a really, really great amount of money. I didn't mention in the original presentation as well, that there are also, part of the leverage here is going to be with in-kind labor from the city, which is estimated, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of labor done in-house, so this is really a, a great project, and, and let's hope that this grant comes through.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move the question, we'll have a roll call vote, this requires a two-third of the whole council as a whole. Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Bedanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Schala Fozefra?
Yay.
Councilor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Asher Ricardegi, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 28 has been granted. Thank you. Does the chairman have an order on this?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $575,000 be appropriated to the Recreation Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, are their recommendation read? Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 29. Are you ready to report?
Yes. C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $570,570 to the Recreation Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We're now moving to another section of the town, on Mechanic Street, the new park that's being constructed. This money would, again, be a 70% match, or, or grant. They're talking about hardscape, hardscapes, fieldstone seat walls, and by two minutes, concrete walkways, landscape work that includes irrigation, new lawns and plantings, compost, mulch, shade trees, evergreen trees, ornamental trees, a natural playground with play-safe mulch and other elements, site furnishings, including a black vinyl coated chain link fence, and lighting. Again, the mayor was asked during the informational presentation on this, whether the money, depend, the use of the money depended upon the obtaining of the grant. The answer was that it did. It would, again, be my recommendation, Mr. President, to grant C-29. I ask you to check with my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yes.
Councilor David Cormier?
I agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-29.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, are their recommendation read to grant Communication 29? Are there any comments or questions? Councilor Feckley?
I have one question to the chair, to the chair. If we approve this, does that take away the chance of the Fornia Park grant being?
No, the city would do both projects, as the mayor suggested, if we get both grants.
Right, but if we only, we're going to get one, it doesn't really, it's like apples and oranges, it doesn't really affect the one.
Exactly, so, so, you know, it, hopefully, we're going to, hopefully, we get both, but chances are, we're going to get one of them, hopefully.
Okay.
We might get none, who knows, but the idea is, is that we're doing the best to get both.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, Councilors, are the recommendation read to grant Communication 29? All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the petition, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $570,570 be appropriated to the Recreation Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, are their recommendation read? Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 30, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the annual tax classification hearing be scheduled for December 10, 2018, for the purpose of setting the annual factor to be used for fiscal year 2019 taxes. You heard from the assessors and the comptroller earlier this evening, the recommendation from their office was to continue with our factor of one classification, and not to adopt either the small business or small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, or the open space discount. It would be the recommend, my recommendation to adopt their recommendation for C-30, which is to maintain that factor of one, most importantly, and those other positions on those exemptions, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Councilor David Cormier?
I also concur.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to adopt C-30, and more particularly, maintain the current position of the city with tax classification factor of one, and not adopt the other exemption options or discount option.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, are the recommendation read to grant Communication 30? Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Bedanza?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Schala Fozefra?
Yay.
Councilor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Asher Ricardegi, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 30 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 31. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-31, Dean J. Mazzar, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $45,000 to the Building Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization account. This relates to the demolition of the property... I'm getting there. Well, it relates to the demolition of the property at Carter Street, which is going to be used for the OEM property. We all remember when we bought this property, because of the Butts OEM, and the thought, even then, was ultimately, this would probably be the best use of this piece of property for the city, and this, this is the amount of money that would be necessary to demolish the existing building. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-31. I ask you to check with my members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Third member, Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-31.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, are the recommendation read to grant Communication 31? Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Frida?
Just a comment, I'm not going to support this. I kind of brought it up at the time that we bought the property. I think it's a, I don't know what condition it is now, but at the time, it was a pretty solid property that the DeChaynos owned, and I really felt that emergency management could use it as an emergency shelter if there were a fire, and from what I just heard this weekend, there was an oil spill or something last week at a property where a family had to move out, went to chox it in with two animals, and, and it was a difficult situation. I understand what we got it for, and what the plan was, but I would rather see pave, as much as you can pave, all around it, which is, you know, substantial area, and if that's not enough, then look at it down the road, but I'd just hate to see a, a decent building torn down for somebody that could be in there in an emergency, or a couple families, actually.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Bedanza?
Yeah, I, I respect the comments of Council Frida, but obviously, EMA, OEM rather, is looking for this parking area, I mean, they have done incredible work down there, and it would be my position to support them as best we can. It's a, really a gem for the city of Leominster, and they, they just do astounding things down there, and I'm sure that they, in good faith, need this area and, and will use it well, so I'm, I'm going to, as I indicated in our committee recommendation, I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, the recommendation is to grant Communication 31. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, the communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $45,000 be appropriated to the Building Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the Councilors, are the recommendation read to move for the adoption of the order on Communication 31? Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed?
Yay.
By a vote of seven to one, the order's been adopted. Thank you. We'll now move on, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good job, committee. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Legal Affairs. Are you the floor to Councilor Frida on 39-18?
39-18, Prime Wellness Centers grant a special permit to build a medical marijuana cultivation facility located at 1771 Lock Drive. And for a little of the history, again, regular course, 31218, amended to change the address to 1771 Lock Drive, on 32618, 4918, the hearing was continued to 514, further time, April 2, 18, 514, 68, 611, 1021, 1113, 1126, hearing was continued to 611, tabled with hearing continued to six, continued 611, removed from the table September 24, 2018, had a public hearing on 1022 at 6:30, it was continued to tonight at 6 o'clock, and the petitioner has requested leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. Councilors, are the recommendation read to give 39-18 leave to withdraw without prejudice? Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing, great, great, seven to nothing, leave to withdraw has been given to 39-18. We'll now move on to Communication 24. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Leominster Water System through a special act of the legislature. We have a public hearing scheduled for January 14, 2019. The recommendation's further time.
Thank you. Councilors, are the recommendation for further time on 24, excuse me, on Communication 24? Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded to Communication 24. Now, I'll turn the page to page six, we have a, the old business, we have 41-18, it's the second reading of the ordinance. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 22-60 of the revised ordinances entitled Procedure for Review is hereby amended by adding the following subsection. 60 dot 1 dot 1 dot 18, I'm sorry, deep observation hole test for stormwater infiltration detention areas. The purpose of the deep observation hole test is to determine the soil profile in the proposed infiltration detention area, the depth of overburden above ledge, bedrock, or impervious layers, soil type and characteristics, and to determine the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation. A minimum of one deep observation hole test shall be performed in the presence of the approving authority at each proposed infiltration detention area. The number and location of the deep hole test should be coordinated with the approving authority. Additional testing shall be required if, in the opinion of the soil evaluator or the approving authority, there is evidence of inconsistent soil characteristics, the presence of ledge, or additional testing is necessary to properly assess site conditions with the proposed location to ensure that it can be installed in accordance with the proposed design. The above referenced approving authority is the City of Leominster Department of Public Works Engineering Division. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Councilor Frida, the clerk?
I agree.
Third member, Councilor Bedanza?
I agree as well.
Please, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second
reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, 41-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Fekley.
Yea.
Councilor Scheller-Folzeffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. 41-18 has been adopted. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Petition 8-19. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Revised Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 13-75 of the Revised Ordinance entitled Speed Limits, Specific Streets, is hereby amended by adding the following text. Burridge Avenue from Main Street to Pier Street at 25 miles per hour. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Frida.
Yes.
There a member, Councilor Bonanza?
I agree as well.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Fekley.
Yea.
Councilor Scheller-Folzeffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. 8-19 has been adopted. We're now move on, before we move on to new business, is there any other old business before the council? Old business. Okay, very good. We turn the page now to Page 8 of the agenda. We have new business, beginning with Communication 20. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Revised Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Mr. President, I just read this ordinance earlier this evening. I don't think I'm required to read it again. I will also be reading it at the second reading, so unless there's an objection, I don't, I don't believe it needs to be read again.
Is there objection?
Okay, thank you. Hardly endorse the idea.
So my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read to adopt Communication 20's first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Fekley.
Yea.
Councilor Scheller-Folzeffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. Communication 20 has been adopted. Thank you. The first reading. We'll now move on to 4-19. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am. First reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the Revised Ordinance entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 20-10 of the Revised Ordinance entitled Parades, Processions, and Assemblies is hereby amended, rescinding the current text in its entirety and by inserting in its place the following, a new section, Section 20-10 Parade Races. I can report on this, Mr. President. The City Clerk's office has had contact with Interim Chief Goldman. He's available to come down any Monday.
Perfect.
Given that this is the last hearing, I think we should, after the organizational chart, the organizational meeting of the City Council at the first of the year, we can set a subcommittee meeting at that time.
That's great.
And regardless of the makeup of the committees, I will have a draft ordinance available at that time.
Perfect. Okay, your convenience, thank you.
So unless there's an objection from my committee members, I'd ask for further time.
Further time. Committee all set?
No objection.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on Petition 4-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of their recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded. We have a resolution regarding grants of Phase 2 of Park at the Mechanic in Laurel Streets Finance?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm not sure this has been read.
It has.
It has?
No, it has not.
I didn't think it. So I think I'm going to need to read this.
Just a hearing.
I don't know.
Yes.
All right, a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for the Communities Grant Program for the expansion of the park at the corner of Mechanic and Laurel Streets in the City of Leominster. Whereas, the French Hill area of the City of Leominster is densely populated area with little open space. The expansion of the Mechanic Laurel Street area of the city as Parkland is a priority as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreation plan in the Gateway Plus Action Plan. And whereas, Mechanic Street Park will greatly enhance the French Hill neighborhood by creating open space for recreation purposes immediately adjacent to the Third Street Playground and expanding the site's open space acreage. And whereas, the main focus of the park is to expand access to open space for neighborhood families and individuals for picnicking, walking, running, unorganized sports, and general leisure. Whereas, said property is designated as a recreational land under Chapter 45, Section 3, by deed and subsequent vote of the City Council and is under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. And whereas, said land adjacent to the current playground has been designated as recreational land under Chapter 45, Section 3, by deed and vote of the City Council and will be under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Department. And whereas, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to the cities and towns to support preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities. And whereas, creation of the new Mechanic Street Park will cost $570,570, and the city has allocated $570,570 through its stabilization account for the purposes of the expansion of the Mechanic Street Park. Now, therefore, be it, one, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants for the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and, two, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Leominster Recreation Department, and, three, that this resolution shall take effect upon passage. Mr. President, it would be my position to approve the resolution, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Second member?
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman?
The unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Fekley.
Yea.
Councilor Scheller-Folzeffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. The resolution has been adopted. Thank you. We'll now move on to the second resolution.
Mr. President, just a point of clarification. Can we vote on a resolution first time on, or is this the second time?
It's the second time.
Second, okay. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Okay, we have a second resolution. I'm going to yield the floor to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Program for improvements to Fournia Park. Whereas, Fournia Field is by far a community-wide asset, and the preservation and improvements to this facility are a city priority as evidenced in the most recent open space and recreational plan. And whereas, Fournia Field renovations and crucial improvements will greatly enhance this facility by addressing present safety concerns at the two softball fields by removing the existing lighting and bleaches, then constructing both new, along with addressing sinkholes and expanding the softball field size to meet tournament play requirements. Restoration will also include handicap accessibility to access to stream and planting of shade trees. Whereas, the main focus of the renovation is to improve recreational use of the 20-acre recreation site and upgrade the facility such that it can be more effectively utilized without overtaxing the facility. Whereas, said property is designated as recreational land under Chapter 45, Section 14, by deed and subsequent vote of the City Council and is under the jurisdiction of the Leominster Recreation Department. Whereas, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Park Program, Chapter 933, Acts of 1977, as amended. And whereas, renovations to Fournia Field will cost $575,000, and the city has allocated $575,000 through its general fund for the purpose of the Fournia Field renovation project. Now, therefore, be it, one, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and, two, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Leominster Recreation Department, and, three, that this resolution shall take effect upon passage. Mr. President, is the, my recommendation to grant the resolution. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor.
I agree.
There a member?
I also agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant the resolution with respect to Fournia Field.
Thank you. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any final questions or comments on the recommendation? If not, the recommendation is to grant. We'll begin with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yea.
Councilor Fekley.
Yea.
Councilor Scheller-Folzeffer.
Yea.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. The resolution's been adopted. Thank you. We now have the City of Leominster, the municipal election calendar. Did you want to read it, or does the Chairwoman have it?
She has, I can read it if she doesn't feel like it.
I'll yield the floor to you if you want it. If you want to read it.
The City Clerk can read it.
Okay.
She's good at it.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you.
First time, go ahead.
So the following dates are to be fixed for...
You owe me coffee on that one.
To be fixed for the City of Leominster's 2019 municipal election calendar. Just as a little side note, they have, this calendar's already been submitted to the state, and they've already reviewed it and approved it as is. The first date is Monday, February 4th, 2019. Nomination papers are available in the City Clerk's office. Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, 5:00 p.m., last day and hour for submitting nomination papers to registrars of voters for the certification of signatures. Tuesday, August 20th, 2019, 5:00 p.m., last day and hour to file certified nomination papers, including statement of candidacy with the City Clerk. Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, City Clerk posts list of candidates. Thursday, August 22nd, 2019, 5:00 p.m., last day and hour for filing withdrawals or objections to all nomination papers with the City Clerk. Thursday, August 22nd, 2019, 5:30 p.m., drawing for position of names on preliminary ballot. Wednesday, September 4th, 2019, last day to register to vote for the preliminary election, 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, posting deadline for a warrant or election order for preliminary. Monday, September 23rd, 2019, noon, last day and hour to apply for absentee ballots for the preliminary election. Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, will be our preliminary election from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday, September 30th, 2019, 5:00 p.m., last day and hour for filing withdrawals or objections to nominations made at the preliminary, and for filing written acceptances by write-in or sticker candidates who won in the preliminary with the City Clerk. Monday, September 30th, 2019, 5:30 p.m., drawing for position of names on election ballot. Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, last day to register to vote in the municipal election, 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 29th, 2019, posting deadline for the warrant or election order for a municipal election. Monday, November 4th, 2019, noon, last day and hour to apply for absentee ballots for the municipal election. Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, municipal election, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, and thank you very much to the City Clerk for a very good job of that. My position would be to approve the City of Leominster 2019 Municipal Election Calendar, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Frida.
I agree.
There a member, Councilor Dobrowski?
I agree.
Please requalify.
We have a unanimous approval of the Ways and Means Committee to approve the City of Leominster 2019 Municipal Election Calendar.
Thank you for your recommendation. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing. We're all set. Thank you. We also have an organizational meeting coming up on January 7th. I'll yield the floor to the Ways and Means Chair to weigh in on that if you like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the City of Leominster City Council Organizational Meeting will be held on January 7th, 2019. Following the 6:30 p.m. swearing-in ceremony, on the agenda would be call to order by City Clerk, roll call of members, election of Council President, election of Vice President, adoption of Council rules, appointment of legal counsel, and naming of Presidents' committees. And it would be my position to approve the scheduling of the organizational meeting for the City Council on January 7th, 2019.
Do we need a vote on that? For the organizational meeting? I don't think we do.
Okay.
Just more of an announcement. Bless you. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
The, I got a, I got a, I had a very interesting conversation with someone up in the Ward 5 neighborhood regarding the streets and snow removal. And I was curious, because when I grew up, I always thought it was a law. I think my father just told us that, so we could all do the sidewalk. But when it came to snow removal, most people, I think out of just courtesy, took care of the frontage of their property. So we did a little bit of research, and we found that there is an ordinance in place that goes back to 1960, and that was the last time it was addressed. And if, I'm not going to read the ordinance to you, but it was all focused on the downtown area. So I think probably it was designed for the merchants to keep their sidewalks clear because the city couldn't take care of that. And so, you know, just wanted to reach out to that gentleman who called me, and I appreciate the call, but at the same time, that doesn't dismiss the fact that, you know, we as good neighbors, when the snow comes, we're very fortunate to have sidewalk plows come by, but we, they can't get to it sometimes in a timely fashion. So if you have the ability to get out and clear your sidewalks, it's appreciated, especially since, you know, the city spends so much money on putting in new sidewalks. The other part, too, is with plowing, you have to keep the plowing away from obstruction of sidewalk. So, and we know, you know, we, the Ward Councils especially, we get the calls all the time. I've seen snowbanks when it's been really bad to the point where the sidewalk plow can't even get through it. So, you know, just, just reaching out. Hopefully, the winter will look like it does outside tonight, but however, it may not. Community calendar, if you can all keep the 27th open, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., I'll be in touch with you via the Clerk's office tomorrow, okay? So if you can keep that night open, it's the 27th of December, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., I'll let you know what's going on. Any other items in the community calendar? Counselor?
It's not a calendar, but it's just something I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Because it's a...
Let's see how this plays out.
It's a good thing.
Good.
I don't know how many of you remember Matt Kelly, who was a member of the band back in the 80s, and my daughter, he was percussion and jazz, and played an incredible number of instruments. And we dedicated the Vietnam Wall in 1990 in the, in the common. He was gracious enough to, to do the, I don't know if they, what they call it exactly, but drum, just a single drum, leading the procession. And, you know, spent the whole time there, was just really a good kid. And my daughter had an article she sent me regarding a fundraiser he was a big part of in Springfield for a Sergeant Thomas Sullivan who died July 16th, 15, in a domestic terrorist attack in Tennessee. And he's raising money for the families. I just think it's, there's a really good article in, on the news about him. It's called "Not So Modern Drummer." And it's, it's all about him and his father, Ed Kelly, where he, you know, got his, his first start. And it's just a kid that's done well, and I think we don't say that enough. And I don't know how many people really know that he's the drummer for Dropkick Murphy.
He is.[1601.15] He is.
And people get excited about that when they do know it. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to him as a, you know, a member of our community that's still continuing to support veterans and doing good things at the, in his 40s now.
It's pretty awesome, yeah. Honest to God, thank you. Anything else? Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to thank the public and a number of people that helped make the Drake House event this weekend. A majority of the city council showed up. It was a great crowd, over, I would say, estimate about 250 people weren't out of the building. The mayor was there, roasting chestnuts. The Office of Emergency Management participated. Wendy was awesome, helping to clean the place and baking. Leamester Historical Society had several volunteers involved. Neil Zany at the Gardener Spot provided some greenery, which we sold most of. So it was a really great event and want to do more things like that there, so keep your eyes and ears open. I think we may do something in February to commemorate the famous rescue that occurred there of fugitive slave Shadrack Minkins back on February the 16th of 1851, which was the first test case on the new Fugitive Slave Act that helped change our nation.
Fantastic. Thank you. I also want to reach out to the chairwoman of Ways and Means and also her committee. When we started this year, this was a tough year. You know, we had two seats to fill up here. And it was an arduous task. You did a great job with it, you know, and it's been a real trial and tribulation year for, for, for this crew and their staff to be reworking the election process and getting the house in order, getting it up to where it needs to be to be a really aggressive, qualified clerk's office for today, not to downplay past clerks, but it's a new generation of thinking and these two have really done a great job. So I want to thank the committee chair and also the committee for that and also you ladies as well and everyone else that did so much work this year for the city, so thank you. Appreciate it. We're done?
No.
Huh?
No. So it's the last meeting of the year and every year, we have to give out our plaque and gauze to the president as a thank you for his service. So I want to give that to you.
Thank you very much.
And say thank you very much.
No, thank you guys, thank you.
Now we can be done if you want.
Thank you. Meeting's over, thank you. You get better. You get feeling better.
Thank you.
Thank you for the...
You're welcome.
The Leamester City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leamester, 978-466-1922.